Alderman Grover. Alderman Rainey. Alderman Burris.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Here.
Alderman Nguyen.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Special City Council Meeting Budget Workshop. First item is public comments, and we had said because we need to have a moment for the council to discuss this budget, that public comments would be limited to 45 minutes. Given the number of speakers, which is over 50, we will have one minute per speaker, and that is all that we can have if the council is going to begin to address this issue. We have been listening to the public since November in budget workshops, and at the last council meeting, we had extensive, at the last budget workshop, we had extensive public comments as well. So we really do need to reach a point where the council can begin to discuss the budget. I am going to call names for public comments. I apologize for the limited amount of time, and I would ask that if you have come to speak to us before, you not raise the same issues. We heard you before, and we have received countless emails, and thank you for them, so please raise new issues today. First speakers are Alex Elliott, Dan Engel, Caitlin Westerfield, Dan McAndrew, and Patricia Connolly. Just state your name and address.
My name is Alex Elliott, and I live at 732 Michigan Avenue in the 3rd Ward. Evanston recently received an $18 million grant to revitalize the 5th and 8th wards. The North Branch hugs the end of the 5th Ward, and the South Branch is the only Evanston library within walking distance of the 8th. Will Evanston discriminate against the people of these wards by closing down these centers of education and harmless recreation, open to the young and old, to the rich and poor, to those who don't even own a single book? It is embarrassing to Evanston for its branches to close. For the statement to be made, "We care more about beautification than about literacy, the key to overcoming poverty and low economic status." It is quite clear that, once closed, the branch libraries will never reopen. No attempt was ever made to reopen or relocate the West Branch that closed only six years after it opened. Instead of trying to close libraries, we should consider opening branches in underserved parts of Evanston. Just over 2% of that $18 million grant could keep our libraries open, and that's at the high end of the budget estimate. Would half a percent more pave the way for a third branch to serve the west side of Evanston? Why is it that Evanston is so innovative at finding money for anything other than our libraries? Less than half of 1% of every $5,000 worth of taxes-
I'm sorry, the minute is up.
Thank you. And my last thing, I just want to say that if Evanston closes the branch libraries, it's going to have to take responsibility for serving over 75,000 residents with a single building, and that's a pretty lofty goal for a city that can't take responsibility for its own budget deficit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dan Engel. I live on Broadway near the Central Business District. One of the interesting features of the business district is how almost every business has a sign saying "save our branches," which is understandable since the libraries bring traffic, traffic brings business, business brings revenue. But that's not the most important reason to support the branches. The branches bring richness to our community. They bring education, culture, literacy. They bring a sense of community. What a tragedy it would be to close those branches, and I think in recognition of that fact is why there are so many protests in favor of the branches, why at my last looking there were over 1,500 signatures on an e-petition in support of the branches. I urge the city council to support the branches. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Caitlin Westerfield, and I live at 2614 Park Place. Cutting the branches of a tree destroys a tree. Cutting the branch libraries destroys opportunities for kids like me to learn. The branch libraries are places for kids like me to go after school, quiet places to hang out, do homework, and access things we may not be able to access at home or at school. As my teacher says, students who do not have support at home rely heavily on the resources and help they find at the branches. I understand that there is still the main branch, but kids like me can't go to the main branch. I'm not supposed to ride the buses by myself, and it's too far to walk. I hope you can find a way to restore funding for the branch libraries so that the branches of our tree continue to reach everyone.
Thank you so much.
Hi. My name is Dan McAndrew, and I live at 1529 Madison Street, and I am a teacher at Park School, which is a self-contained special education school devoted to students within the severe to profound mental impairment range. And my fellow teachers and I use our South Branch Library very often for my class. We visit it once a week, whether permitting, to push wheelchairs. We have stories read to us for about 45 minutes by one of the librarians. We sit in the front room for another 45 minutes to an hour looking at books and magazines. That can't be replicated anywhere else. The social interactions that we have to be able to sit quietly, or in some cases not so quietly, with our fellow patrons is vital to my students' education. If the South Branch were to close, we could not visit the main branch as we don't have access to public transportation, as Main Street CTA station is not wheelchair accessible, and the time constraints to ride a bus with three wheelchairs just isn't in the mix. So if we lose the South Branch, we lose that access to reading books and social interactions with our fellow Evanston residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Tricia Connolly. I live at 1001 Dodge Avenue. I'm also the librarian at Washington Elementary School at 914 Ashland. I'd like to start by beginning to read a letter of support for the Evanston librarians. This is signed by District 65 librarians. Madam Mayor and City Council members, as library media specialists of District 65, we'd like to extend our support to Evanston public librarians and the services they provide to the Evanston community. Their developmental literacy programming, coupled with access to both print and electronic resources, are invaluable services at all locations to our community for both young and old. Thank you for considering our comments. Amy Wharton, Patricia Connolly, Donna Richardson, Christine Skogland, Lillian Sedat, Elisa McLean-Gahl, Susan Jaita, Kafira Philippe, Kristen Anderson, Laura Klein, Kathleen Roth, Shalana Jacques, and Jan Troy. In closing, as a school librarian myself, I would like to share a few thoughts on how the South Branch is of support to my school, Washington Elementary. For many years, our teachers have taken students from primary grades on walking trips over to this branch to enjoy storytime books and even signing up for library cards. In addition, teachers, including myself, have found this a convenient location to pick up those books that we don't have in our own collection, but would like to use to enhance a lesson or unit of study. The ability for the main branch to send over books to the South Branch for teachers to pick up there is also helpful, as some of our staff live in Chicago. As an educator, I know that time is needed to prepare to be ready to give my students the tools they need to achieve their learning goals in the library.
Could you please wind it down? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. On behalf of our community that's coming forward today, we'd like to ask you to give us the same time to plan a clear and concise plan for the coming year for the future of the Evanston library system. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Jim Hughes, Mary Rosinsky, Trish Steiglitz, Patty Cruz, and Eb Moran. If you could come up.
I prefer my time to everybody else.
All right. Jim, where are you?
He's here.
Please be respectful of the speakers at the end, because we are supposed to limit this to 45 minutes, and it's now limited to an hour, but I'd like to hear from everybody. So please limit your comments.
I'm Jim Hughes, 2518 Hartsell. Madam Mayor, I want to speak on behalf of everybody. We have a group that came together, this small group of ours, to give you a presentation to show you what we've been working on. We'd like to do that in about three, four minutes, if we could have that.
You can have that time, but I had understood that there was going to be one presentation on behalf of the library, and obviously, there have been many more.
We'll defer all our time to two people.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce Laurie.
Hi. My name is Laurie Keenan. I'm at 2214 Colfax Street. I am a North Branch patron and a Branch Love supporter. I don't want to presume to take all of the library's time today. I'm here to speak on behalf of Branch Love and the people from Branch Love who have signed up to speak today. Public libraries inspire and empower. Everyone is welcome. Almost anything can be explored. Libraries play an important role for individuals and communities. This is a quote we found yesterday from an organization called Geek the Libraries, which is funded by Bill and Melinda Gates, who gave $30,000 this week to the Zion Public Libraries in support of these sorts of efforts to keep libraries in communities. The library represents economy. Local economies today are in rapid transition, moving from basis of manufacturing and service industries to information and idea industries. Given these changes, forward-thinking communities are reassessing their assets and development strategies in light of what is needed next to succeed in the new and next economies. Evanston is no exception. The Urban Library Council formerly of Evanston calls libraries "an active and responsive part of the community and an agent for change." Jobs, property values, better grades, improved test scores, all of these things are important and coming from the libraries. Libraries are an economic engine. While other states, the number we've been using was $4 to $6 for every dollar going into libraries, the Illinois Library Association said this week, "For us, every dollar spent actually returns $9 to our local community." Both branches provide sales tax revenue from the local merchants. Currently, Wilmette has between 4,000 and 6,000 Evanston residents using their library. Imagine when the branches close. If the branches close, what that will mean for the tax revenue also leaving our community. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Increasingly, cities are moving away from enticing outside firms with tax abatements and other incentives to building on what we already have, the local strengths and the support of the community that are already in place and very important. Branch library use is up 35%. More than 500 people rallied in support. More than 1,600 people have signed an online petition of support. Evanston libraries are a local strength. This is a quote from a woman at 3 Crowns Park who tells of the importance of the branch libraries to her. This is just one of the quotes that I pulled from our petition. I would encourage you to please go online and read some of the comments from the citizens from all over, all ages, all walks. This is a quote from January 14th, New York Times. The president of the American Library Association, "Changing lives. As the poor economy continues to fuel deep library budget cuts, I'm haunted by the notion that for each hour a library is closed and for every service lost, thousands will lose the opportunity to better our lives through education." On Thursday, our library board, unprecedented, approved the following resolution. Recognizing the economic, cultural, and educational value of the Evanston Public Library to the community, the library board supports the continued operations of the entire library system and opposes the proposed closure of the North and South Branch libraries. They spontaneously and not on their agenda created a task force specifically designed to do this. We want to work with them to find a long-term solution, a task force on sustainable funding for the Evanston Public Libraries. So what's next? We've talked about the numbers of people who have signed up. This is a list of just some of the people who have offered their help in the last three weeks that we began to organize. Every single person, two, a person, has offered their assistance in this matter. Doesn't matter who they are or what organization they represent. We have the will, we have the skill, we need the time. Please give us a year to fundraise, to look for grants, to establish a 501(c), to reestablish a Friends Library program, to organize volunteers, establish public and private partnerships. Look what we've done in the past three weeks and imagine the possibilities. Branchlove.org supports this and asks for one year to please let us organize to help support our libraries, sustaining them and increasing them in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Guthrie was going to speak to two specific business opportunities for ways that we could incorporate this. She's got one minute. Has she signed up? Yes.
There are a number of other people you haven't mentioned yet. We need to call our plans.
Could you name your names and help me out here?
Larry Lundee is one.
Okay, got you.
My name is Michael Danin.
All right.
For my time.
Thank you. Emily, you're at-
I prefer my time.
You're at four minutes, Emily.
I prefer my time.
Okay, okay. I'm convinced. I'm a believer. Just tell me when I get to your names that you deferred already. Thank you very much. Emily, go right ahead.
Morning. I'm Emily Guthrie. I live at 730 Judson. We have found a couple of ways that we might be able to take this question off the city council's agenda year after year as it comes up. One of the things that's been discussed is a special services area, and we have looked at the legislation for this. It is designed to provide improvements like sewers, gutters, straits. We use it in the downtown for extra trash removal and extra snow removal. We don't believe it's appropriate to this issue. There is legislation on the book in the state of Illinois, put there in '75. Wilmette took advantage of it within a year and created a separate library district. They have been functioning that way. I've talked to the present director, former director, who was there during the transition, and a member of the board at length, and they feel that it makes them more directly responsible to the electorate for their budget and for the services they provide. We would like to see the library board, in a civil and bloodless and inexpensive way, create a resolution that comes to the city council, which you have 60 days to consider, and then this transition could start. Trustees would be elected in the fall. The levy stays the same unless, of course, the electorate votes to raise it. Since we are funded at approximately 1/3 of what Wilmette is, and I believe about 1/5 of what Skokie is, I would like to make the case eventually that we need to increase the levy, but that would be up to the voters. I've brought copies of the statute so that you can take a look at it. Two weeks ago, I put this on your plates showing you how we are funded in relation to our neighbors. This is, we'd like that task force to have time to sit down with citizens. We've got a lot of ideas, a lot of energy. I think we can direct it to this topic. If chili cook-offs can raise $50,000 for a presidential candidate in this town, and have a whole lot of fun doing it, I don't know why we can't raise some private money, a lot more private money for the libraries. The present funding cut, I know that all the departments were asked to find a 5% reduction in their budgets. The library has been asked to take a 17% cut, and that is going to mean that the branches are effectively gutted. Since we believe we can keep them open, we would like you, eventually, you know, with our task force, we would like you, if you have to, cut the hours, cut the staff, but please don't vacate the properties and make us have to then try and find a way to get them reopened. Leave them intact, even if it's on a more limited basis, and give us time to sit down and go to work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to assume that Mary Rosinsky and Patty Cruz deferred their remarks, and I'm going down the list. Marsha Mahoney.
Here.
Thank you. Heather Schaeff.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, oh, okay.
Schaefer.
Thank you. Charlotte Hilton. Samuel Thomas. Rick Thomas. And I apologize, but this handwriting is beyond me. Estes.
Good morning. I'm Charlotte Hilton, 1721 Ashland in Evanston. I am speaking in reference to their city garbage situation. I know that Evanston revenue is down, just like they are in the rest of the country, and I know the city council has a hard decision to make. The budget calls for giving garbage collection to a private sector. I believe the Evanston sanitation crew has always done a great job in picking up the garbage. I have no complaint. So if we can go to a private company, they might give us a little bit now, but what about in the future? Couldn't this end up costing us more in the long term? And would a private company be as flexible to Evanston as the crew is now? I am concerned that if the service is not good, the council will not be willing to bring garbage collection back to the city of Evanston. These are my concerns for the city council to think about.
Thank you. Charlotte Hilton.
Good morning. My name is Rick Thomas, Executive Vice President, ASME, Local 1891, Madam Mayor, City Council, and to all you good people. My concern is that the city of Evanston employees, ASME members, have always diligently served the city of Evanston. We've always rose to any occasion regarding the needs of the community. We go forward in providing care for the parks, the streets, the sewers, the waters, whatever it is that the residents' needs in the city of Evanston. We have been diligently and serving unselfishly to perform the duties that is required and is needed for the city and the residents thereof. It is very important, I believe, that the city council, and I understand the dilemma that you face, but also my concern is that we need to really think about ways to create revenue to help sustain the effects of what has been happening with the city in a large magnitude, because we take our jobs very seriously. And I believe that each and every one of us have to maintain a lifestyle that is conducive to where we've been all these years. We have families, and we have to provide for our families as well. Privatizing, to me, is not an option. I believe that we have to really work together and create ways to create income that would help sustain us as well as the citizens.
I'm sorry. I need you to wrap it up.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We have been very loyal to the city and the community in large, and as well to the city council. We just ask that you do the same.
Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Florence Estes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the staff rep for ASME, the union that represents over 300 City of Evanston employees. These are the public workers who plow the snow, remove graffiti, manage the water, remove trash and recycling, fix the streets, keep and maintain the parks, and of course, provide library services, and many more essential services that keep Evanston running. The contemplated budget cuts will result in layoffs of 27 of our members, 16 of whom work at the libraries, and will privatize refuse collection currently being done by Evanston crews. Everybody understands that Evanston is not immune from the effects of the struggling economy, and a lot of what's being done is budget cuts and reductions in services in order to fill that budget gap. Cutting fat out of a budget is one thing, but cutting into muscle and bone is quite another. In the long and the short run, I truly hope, and I believe, that the city will be looking at the gorilla in the room, which is the need to raise revenues. First, we hope that the council will exhaustively examine the dozens of fees, permits, and fines, which, if adjusted, may help to fill the budget gap. Second, our union supports keeping the branch libraries open. We support a sustainable plan. I know there's several ideas circulating about funding schemes, and in general-
I need you to wrap it up. I'm sorry.
We support such a plan if it's fair and equitable. Finally, real quick, House Bill 174, a tax reform bill, which would bring $3 million a year to Evanston. That could be voted on in Springfield this year. We know you can't vote on that as a council, but we do urge you to consider HB 174 and to pass a resolution in support of it. I thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Judy Crismanek, Chris Sky, Hannah Michael Schwartz, Janice Michael, Margot Scholl, and Karen Terry.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'll see my time back to the council for today's business. I'll submit my time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm Karen Terry. I defer my time.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Go right ahead.
I'm Margot Scholl. I live at 1525 Brummel Street, and we've heard a lot today about the libraries, and I'm sensitive to that. I'm so afraid there's another issue that will go unnoticed, because it's come up, as I feel, suddenly, which is the proposal to shut down Evanston Ecology Center. I was shocked to hear that this week. I hadn't heard anything about it before. The impact of this, this will affect thousands of Evanston residents. There are over 700 day campers. Your children have probably been an EcoQuest and EcoExplorer. There are high school interns. There's a community garden system, adult classes. There's a special needs class. The impact is over the entire Evanston community, and it's a unique and irreplaceable gift that the Ecology Center gives to our community. There's also a factor of waste. Just three years ago, the Evanston Environmental Association spearheaded raising almost $1 million to renovate, beautifully renovate, the Ecology Center and almost double its size. And they raised this money with both private and public funds, so this is your money that was spent. And so now, what happens to this building when the program is shut down? I mean, does this just become something we rent out for weddings and bar mitzvahs? That's not the purpose of this building. It was to help our community face its environmental issues. I think Evanstonians think of ourselves as a green community. We think of ourselves as environmentally sensitive. The government asked our schoolchildren to paint the snowplows with snazzy eco sayings, and now the same government is going to turn around and tell those schoolchildren that it's shutting down, the program that helped teach it about ecology for almost four decades.
I need you to wrap it up. I'm sorry.
My final wrap it up, I know we can't afford many things, but the Ecology Center is one thing that our community can't afford to lose. There's nothing else that replaces it, so I ask you to bring the word out into the community about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Judy Crismanek. I live at 2211 Hart Tree with my husband and two children, ages 8 and 10. I just wanted to put forth that I think that the city, in threatening to close libraries and proposing things like closing an ecology center, are two, the types of actions that are creating an image problem for our city. In all of its marketing and literature, Evanston sort of goes out of its way to present itself as this progressive, cosmopolitan community. We're very green. We're very, we have walkable neighborhoods. We're sustainable. We love education and ideas, and this is a sort of like self-portrait that we have of ourselves that Evanston sort of keeps in its pocket, ready to pull out when, you know, if anybody is interested. And that's great, but we're not going to win ourselves any spots on anybody's most livable cities list if we're cutting libraries and, you know, places like an ecology center. We can say that this is who we are, but then we have headlines that come out, like in the Tribune, that says Evanston to shut two libraries, and this is what the outside world sees about us. And when they see that, they do not see a city that cares about education. They see a city that takes books away. When they see that, they don't see a city that is green and sustainable. They see a city that tells its residents to drive to its library. So I just, the question that I'm wondering, and I'll wrap it up, is that, you know, how much money does the city spend to market itself as this sustainable, savvy, livable city? We try to present ourselves as a livable city, and I would propose that the money that we spend on marketing and communications to paint that image is actually wasted if the actions of our government completely contradict that image.
Thank you.
And we should use this as an opportunity to get headlines saying that we're solving problems in a creative way.
Thank you. Please be, please be respectful of one another's time when you're speaking.
Hi. My name is Hannah, and I live on 1045 Chicago Avenue, and I just wanted to speak in support of the branch libraries. I'm a single mom without much income, and I know there's a lot of people in Evanston without much- and proposing things like closing the Ecology Center, are two, the types of actions that are creating an image problem for our city. In all of its marketing and literature, Evanston sort of goes out of its way to present itself as this progressive, cosmopolitan community. We're very green, we're very, we have walkable neighborhoods, we're sustainable, we love education and ideas, and this is a sort of like self-portrait that we have of ourselves that Evanston sort of keeps in its pocket, ready to pull out, you know, if anybody is interested. And that's great, but we're not going to win ourselves any spots on anybody's most livable cities list if we're cutting libraries and, you know, places like an Ecology Center. We can say that this is who we are, but then we have headlines that come out, like in the Tribune, that says Evanston to shut two libraries, and this is what the outside world sees about us. And when they see that, they do not see a city that cares about education, they see a city that takes books away. When they see that, they don't see a city that is green and sustainable, they see a city that tells its residents to drive to its library. So I just, the question that I'm wondering, and I'll wrap it up, is that, you know, how much money does the city spend to market itself as this sustainable, savvy, livable city? We try to present ourselves as a livable city. And I would propose that the money that we spend on marketing and communications to paint that image is actually wasted if the actions of our government completely contradict that image.
Thank you.
And we should use this as an opportunity to get headlines saying that we're solving problems in a creative way.
Thank you. Please be-- Please be respectful of one another's time when you're speaking.
Hi, my name is Hannah, and I live on 1045 Chicago Avenue. And I just wanted to speak in support of the branch libraries. I'm a single mom without much income, and I know there's a lot of people in Evanston without much income. And to drive to the library includes parking, and that actually ends up being quite a bit. And even to take the train or the bus, it's a few dollars either way, but when you don't have much income, or really nothing at all when you're a student, or it really sort of becomes prohibitive. And I know there's a lot of seniors that may have that issue, and also a lot of single moms with themselves. And so, I know I take my son, I live a few blocks away from the South Branch, and I take my son there a lot, so I think it's really important to consider the financial issues that people have when things become prohibitive like that. So, we should definitely consider that, especially as a city that prides itself on being one of the ones in the North Shore that is economically diverse and racially diverse. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Janice Michael. I live at 2227 Lincoln Wood Drive. I raised two children here, one of whom you just saw. And I just wanted to say that I moved here for the services for my children. When I was looking for a place to live, I was coming to this area, I saw in Evanston a place where I could walk to the library, I live near the North Branch. I saw in Evanston a place where my children had public facilities that they could use at a cost that I could afford. I could walk, I didn't have to pay for parking. They could become familiar with the librarians, with the collections, and learn to love books. I moved here partly after I spoke to one of the librarians at North Branch, actually, and she told me about the services. So I plead to you, with you, that a central branch does not fill all of our needs. We can't all afford parking. We can't all afford daily bus fare or train fare to get to a library with our children. We need those local services, and when times are bad for the city, times are bad for us, and many of us can even less afford centralizing those services and making, putting them out of walking distance. We need to look at distributing services more, not less, when times are tight for our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Rick Nelson, Dick Stanton, Judy Hoffman, Rick Thomas, Florence Estes, you're up again, so I'm going to X you off, you seem to be signed up twice. Go ahead.
My name is Rick Nelson. I live at 2670 Prairie in Evanston. I'm actually speaking today on behalf of the Ecology Center. Evanston is a city that cares about the environment. The Evanston Ecology Center is a physical and a symbolic home for much of the environmental programs, classes, and events that take place in Evanston relative to the environment. An example of just one Ecology Center event, the Evanston Green Living Festival, drew its largest attendance this past year of over 1,800 people. So really, that kind of demonstrates that from the Ecology Center standpoint, it's not a dormant facility, it's a very active facility. And if you eliminate the Ecology Center facility and its valuable staff, what does that really say about Evanston as a, as a community that's supporting the environmental activities of the, of the people? And we're not talking about just a small percentage of cuts to the Ecology Center. Right now, it's actually, the discussion is to eliminate it entirely. So in many cases, as far as what's been going on in the budget cuts, people are looking to cut five or 10% out of an entity. In this case, the discussion is talking about eliminating the Ecology Center altogether.
I am sorry, but I do need you to wrap it up.
So I'm just here today to support the operation, the continued operation of the Ecology Center and its staff, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Judy Hoffman, and I live at 2033 Sherman Avenue. In my capacity as voter service chair of the League of Women Voters of Evanston, I coordinate the local candidate forums. Thanks to the Evanston Community Media Center, Evanston residents have the opportunity to fully educate themselves, unfiltered, on the positions of the candidates. Even with the volume of candidate forums held by different community groups, busy schedules keep people from attending in person. By necessity, candidate forums are held at various locations all over Evanston. The unique, remote production capability of the media center can provide, with multi-camera setup, essential production for the forums. Evanston residents need and deserve the transparency of the campaign process provided by the community cable station. Without this resource, I believe the experience of elections in Evanston would be tarnished. I ask our council and community to continue to maintain support for the media center in its function to keep our community fully informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dick Stanton. I'm here to talk on the privatization issue. Private firms that take over these businesses are not not-for-profits. So, in providing services, the first thing is you cover profit. So where do the cuts come? The cuts come through cuts in wages, benefits. So some people would say, so what? We're still getting the services. But unfortunately, the old phrase, you get what you pay for. Let me just tell you what happened. The Chicago Transit Authority, special needs children, that work was subcontracted, the transportation. What happened was that they hired people at very low wages, and when it's rainy, snowy, conditions aren't ideal, the people don't come to work, because they can get another low-wage job very easily. And personally, my sister had a special needs child, and many days, the bus either didn't arrive or arrived late. So what I'm saying is that if you do privatize these services, you're going to have less service, and eventually, you're going to find that your costs increase because the private companies need profit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Marge Anderson, Henry Latimer, Lisa Wright, Mike Vasilko, and Junad Riske.
Madam Mayor, I concede my attendance in support of the branch libraries.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Lisa Wright, and I live at 909 Greenwood Street. And I'm here to support funding for human services. I'm asking you to not cut the budget for the mental health board. The mental health board provides important and needed services to people with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor and the council, my name's Henry Latimer. I live at 2322 Isabella Street. On top of the comments made about the branch libraries, I guess I would like to put my view in perspective. To me, the downtown library is a branch library. It's a bigger one. But if you had to, in the absence of being able to make a special district and those other choices, I would put more of the library budget cut into the main branch and spread more of the revenue and resource into the branches, and also look to address the inequities that Alderman John Baptiste mentioned at the last budget workshop, to spread resources further into the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue in Evanston. The long-term budget proposal for a lakefront fine arts, performing arts, meetings and conventions district is a very realistic proposition, that if it existed today, the tax revenue generated would allow Evanston to open new branch libraries, not close them, extend police and fire services, not trim them back, pay for the police and firemen's pension fund in a matter of a few years, not decades, hire city staff, not fire them, increase funding for the cultural arts programs, not eliminate their budget, generate hundreds of new permanent jobs for full-time jobs for Evanston residents, and much more. I ask, again, for more than a minute of time to explain the details of the proposal. I ask that those who continue to criticize the proposal offer something as significant and as reliable a revenue source for the many decades to come. Please schedule time for a formal presentation. The reference to this proposal being a long-term solution does not mean we have time to waste. Thank you.
Thank you.
Junad Riske, I am going to speak to the capital plan, since nobody has so far. In my opinion, the plan has many problems, probably 5% to 10% is just waste, in my opinion. And I am qualified to discuss capital plans, but the other thing is, a lot of this meant what I think the Aldermen have done too much politics. But I want to get into some other issues with the capital plan. You have a system of water pipes under this city that's so old, it probably surpasses the problems with your police and fire pension fund as far as funding. You're never, you're not fixing them. What you do is you spend $300,000 a year to go replace them. I saw them when they were doing the project up in my neighborhood, they were basically, a city crew was out there fixing the water pipe, they came back and they just covered the whole thing up with a whole new roadbed. That's a waste of taxpayers' money. Okay, this kind of stuff is what's wrong. There's a lot of money wasted here with the capital plan. I mean, and you know you're in trouble because you took the sprinkler system out of a parking garage. You know, the firefighters are upset, they're not going to have manpower, but when they go to that parking garage to fight the fire, it's going to be interesting. And there's other problems. We can talk about that, you're laughing, but you don't know the technical issues of that, so I would advise, I would say that's a problem. These kind of problems are costing the taxpayers money. There's a long list of these problems that keep happening, so--
Mr. Riske, we need you to wrap it up.
Wrap it up. Basically, the water department's asking for a 40% increase. So, you know, that's going to cost the taxpayers an awful lot of money, so we're going to not waste that money.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
I just think it's important to note that what was said about the sprinkler system was inaccurate, and I would defer to Mr. Bobkowitz to explain exactly why the sprinkler system was taken out of the garage. It's not about funding, it was actually for sort of legal reasons. So if we could have a, I just don't want information being put out in the public that is clearly wrong. It gives a wrong impression, and I think we need to address it as soon as it happens for a public comment. Thank you.
Mr. Bobkowitz, do you want to respond?
Actually, I think I'm going to look to Marty Lyons, our Assistant City Manager. Marty, you've got a mic right in front of you, to explain that.
When we took the sprinkler system out of the parking deck in question, it was based on code. I also see a better backup than myself. Doug, would you or Dave want to handle it? Because I'm the numbers guy, but I'll defer to the code folks on the issue, and we'll have a shorter explanation.
Very short.
Short and dug, boy.
I could pass the buck on to David, but I won't. Basically, when we built the garage, it was a code requirement to put in that system. Since then, that code requirement has been dropped. So it was either leave the pipes in and have to maintain them as they rust, and provide that kind of maintenance, or pull them down and be done with it. And that's basically what we did. We did leave the system in place where there are people, and that's in the office.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, the next speakers are Mary Rooney, Melissa Daitchik, Alex Elliott, Dan Engel, Kaitlin Westerfield.
I'm Mary Rooney, and I would just like to ask those to stand up who are in favor of keeping the branch libraries open.
Thank you very much. Alex-- Thank you very much. All right, does anyone on that list want to speak? All right. Dan McAndrew? All right, perfect. Patricia Connolly? Jim Hughes? All right, you're all, you're all signed up twice under--
No agenda was passed out before we signed up, so we didn't know which--
Oh, thank heaven, because maybe there are more. Maybe we'll get through this after all. All right, I'm going to list, and if anyone wants to come up and speak, please do. Patricia Connolly, Jim Hughes, Mary Rosinski, Trish Scott Daglitz, Patty Cruz, Judy Crismanek, who spoke, and Chris Sky. Excellent, moving right along. Alderman, ex-Alderman Eb Moran again, Michael Tanner, Lori Keenan, Emily Guthrie, it looks like Mahoney Marcia-- --who spoke. Larry Lundey, Heather Schaefer, Charlotte, who spoke, Samuel Thomas, Steve Bartlebaum. Steve.
Good morning. No food today, I'm sorry, budget. Madam Mayor, City Manager, members of the City Council, you may have noticed that ECMC has not been bartering you with emails lately, nor have we bought many people to speak at today's meeting, and you may wonder why. The reason's simple, you saw the support of our members and friends at the last council budget meeting, and now we want to allow as much time as possible for the council to be able to discuss options for rearranging--
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So what can ECMC offer? Well, we've done everything we can to find a way to make this work, and currently, we're going to be willing to do our part and take a $100,000 cut. ECMC is also willing to relocate to a municipal facility or rent-free establishment. If successful, the center will be able to continue to operate at $100,000 less than our current budget next year and in years to come. We know relocating will have a price tag, but the media center is also willing to use its entire 2009 restricted equipment budget of approximately $80,000 to help the potential build-in cost. We feel that we provide an extremely beneficial service to the city, so we're willing to make concessions, though this is financially the best we can do. We have a very short timetable, but we're doing everything we can to nurture a deal that will have a positive effect on ECMC. If $100,000 is put back on the table, we have a year to create an agreement, make a successful transition, and still provide full services for public, educational, and governmental access. We also are redesigning our plans for underwriting and fundraising to try and increase our future income, so we're not sitting still, we're not running in place, we're moving forward. I hope you can appreciate or desire to think out of the box for a creative solution, and we hope that we can count on your support to make it a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eric Zaslow, Victoria Lyman, Kevin O'Connor, and Charles Smith. Thank you very much.
Hi, Victoria Lyman. I own a business at 2114 Central Street in Evanston, Allegro Dance Boutique. I am here on behalf of the Central Street Merchant Association. We wanted to come and show our support. Central Street Merchant Association consists of several businesses of all kinds along Central Street. We do support the keeping open of the branch libraries, specifically, the North Branch for us is on Central Street. Our customers consistently say that they're on their way to the North Branch Library, they're consistently talking about the library, how much they love it. We didn't find out about this until the midst of the holiday shopping season, and despite how much retailers do care about that, we were able to motivate everyone along Central Street to show their support. I've come here with about 700 names that we got on our petitions. Most of the businesses put these at their stores. January is typically a very slow retail month, and despite that, we do have about 700 names. And we just want more time to be able to get the group together and support, fundraise, do whatever we can to keep the branch open.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Charles Smith. I live at 1607 Dobson Street in Evanston here. I'm here to speak on the behalf of the Ecology Center. I have, as well as many other citizens of Evanston, have put in many hours over the last 10, 15 years to help to provide a very crucial resource to the community. Access to the environment and access to learning about the ecology, our local ecology and the general ecology, to provide a resource to schoolchildren and the citizens. Over a 10-year period, myself and the Evanston Environmental Association worked very hard to create that, to bring that new facility to Evanston. We raised over $800,000 of non-taxpayer funds to build that facility in order to house the kinds of programs that we have there now. And we have helped the Ecology Center, not just to be a resource, but also to be a funnel, a vehicle for funds to be brought into the programs that serve the community. The $200,000 city budget, the amount that's budgeted to the Ecology Center, is actually leverages over $400,000 to $500,000 in resources and services, because it allows the opportunity for citizens to volunteer their time, for grants and other money to be funneled into that program. So I encourage the City Council to recognize that fact and to not cut budget to the Ecology Center, but actually help to find ways to expand and very-- Center, but actually help to find ways to expand a very critical program for the city.
Thank you, Charles. Now, I know some of these people have spoken, so just don't come up if I call your name and you have already spoken. Heather Schaefer, Rick Thomas, Florence Estes, Dick Stanton, Manuel Silver. Eloquent speech, thank you. Irene Gregory, Lois Combs, Kay Silver, and Virginia Beatty.
Kay Silver, I want to clean my-
You can see it as many times as you-
I'm always contacted for a reminder.
Thank you.
Irene Gregory, 1900 Sherman Avenue, Evanston. When I read about our new city manager, I thought, wow, all this experience. They're going to come here with creativity, with magic that's going to solve our problems in a realistic way. But you're one up on George Washington. You take a hatchet job to three of our educational and cultural institutions. This is the essence of Evanston. That's why we're here. That's why we're loved and applauded by our surrounding communities. Why make an empty hull of the city of Evanston that supports so many of the cultural and educational activities? You know, we could hire someone at minimum wage to take a hatchet to our city.
I think I'm going to interrupt and say that the city manager is doing exactly what the City Council asked the city manager to do. He has come up with a budget that does not increase taxes. And the reason that we asked the city manager to come up with a budget that does not increase the taxes is that the thing that we value most about this community is the diversity of this community, and we are having a large number of foreclosures, particularly in the second and fifth ward, and we do not want to increase taxes and thereby increase the number of people who are losing their homes due to foreclosure. So, the city manager is doing exactly what we asked him to do.
Thank you for your consideration. The Ecology Center. We're all trying to improve our footprint, and many people are still waking up to what green means. The Ecology Center is probably the greenest entity we have in the city. They educate our children. They put on the green fairs. As a matter of fact, they do know that the Ecology Center is the only organization maybe in the world that has entertained life from outer space. And that's when the ducks from Poof came down to race with the ducks from Planet Earth. And it was a great day. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Virginia Beatty, and I live at 1509 Forest Avenue in Evanston, and I'm here to support the Ecology Center, and I'm not going to say anything about how wonderful and fantastic it is, but I would like to say before I start that the City Council and the city manager should be commended for holding these extra meetings and getting us all thinking about Evanston and what we should be doing, and getting us off our duff, and maybe even having us thinking about volunteering some of our great brains and talents to help the community. And I'm willing to volunteer in any capacity that you would want me to serve. Well, maybe not. But I have an idea-
Thank you, Mr.-
-how we could come up with some support for the Ecology Center in terms of our current budget. I thought, hmm, what could we do? Because people are transient little growing things and organic, organic's very good, and they need to be protected when they're young and tender. And what can we give up temporarily to improve our kid-growing, old-people-caring community? And so, I'm going to suggest that we look at the Evanston budget, items 3515 and 3525. One of it is about $900,000 that's spent on parkway tree maintenance, which I think's very important. It's a health and safety item, and it shouldn't be attacked. On the other hand, tree planting could maybe be postponed a little bit, or maybe done a little bit better. I mean, if a tree gets killed off in three years because it's been run over by the mower 17 times, maybe that's not going to do very much good, so we might as well plant less of them and take better care of them. I think education's a great thing that we could work on. I'm not going to say anything more, but I think that if you all want to ask us to work with city people, I happen to be rather informed on trees, the care of trees. I've worked for Johnson Tree Experts, running their situation for a couple of summers. I know a little bit more about plants. I've been around the block a couple of times, and I've lived in Evanston since 1962. So, I am willing to serve as a volunteer-
Thank you.
-as long as it doesn't mean stuffing envelopes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Cynthia Beebe tried to beat that speech. Judy Hoffman, Fred Schneider, and Jeff Smith.
Hi, my name's Cindy Beebe. I live at 1915 Neu Street, and I'm here on the libraries. I only got in a couple of days ago. I have a couple of concrete ideas that I thought might help. First of all, Mr. Bobkowitz, thank you for opening the city stuff on the internet. I don't know how to do it, but it's outstanding. But for the libraries, we need to cut costs, raise funds, and open a west branch. The way we can do that, we need to get through one year. The main librarian, I doubt would like this, but cut main library hours 10%. Cut branch library hours 25% to raise funds. Fundraisers need goals. Tell us we need a quarter million dollars, we will go get that money. If we open a public-private partnership, we can do that. This is Evanston, and we have money. As far as opening a west branch goes, we need something at Dodge and Dempster. Put it as part of the bill. Yes, we'll let you do this, but within 24 to 36 months, we want a library open at Dodge and Dempster. Dodge and Dempster is dying. It would stabilize that area. It would bring in foot traffic. I volunteered at Kingsley School. The west branch needs a library. And when these libraries are gone, they're gone. The recession will end. I know you're in a tough spot, but we have money. We'd support these libraries, give the west branch a library.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, my name is Fred Schneider. I live on Neu Street in Evanston. I'm here to talk about the proposed closure of the Ecology Center. As a board member for the last four years for the Evanston Environmental Association, I've had the opportunity to see thousands of children, get the opportunity to learn about our environment directly, children from all over town, all over Evanston, at critical points in their development. I've seen thousands of adults get the opportunity to learn the best ways to live sustainably and to support this city's own mission and efforts to reduce our carbon footprint. I've seen the oldest, longest-running environmental institution in this town, the Ecology Center, which is now 35 years old, created by citizens for citizens in this town, lead the way to support the greening of this city. Today, the institution is proposed to be completely shut down. No other entity in the entire budget here has that kind of a proposal facing it. We've just learned about this. We're getting our act together as a group. We'd like to know who we should talk to in the city. We'd like to have the time to create a plan to make this a sustainable institution, given the economic conditions that you all face. Every North Shore municipality has parks, only Evanston is the only one that has an Ecology Center. At our Green Living Festival this year, Howard Lerner, the Executive Director of the Environmental Law and Policy Center, the most effective policy center in the entire Midwest, a very, and he's an award-winning guy, in his opening remarks, he said, gee, I wish I had a place like this where I live. I wish I had a facility like this where I live. We need this kind of place. And this is somebody who has a lot of impact on the environment in the United States.
I need you to wrap it up.
Okay. The Ecology Center generates 50% or more of its revenues on its own, earned revenues. It knows how to make money to help sustain itself. We're asking for time to come up with a plan and to tell us who we should talk to and work to, work with the city, to create some kind of sustainable plan for the Ecology Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Given the number of comments regarding the Ecology Center, perhaps, Mr. Bobkowitz, it would be a good idea to clarify exactly in what context the proposed budget seeks to reduce expenses at the Ecology Center, to what extent, and, and perhaps bring some better understanding to the Ecology Center. Thank you.
Alderman Grover, members of the City Council, good morning. The cut to the Ecology Center is contained in a list of additional reductions that I have proposed, an additional $1,500,000, in addition to the $9.5 million of reductions and other adjustments to balance the operating budget. So, that reduction to the Ecology Center would only be considered by the council at such time that the council wishes to look at those additional cuts, which I've recommended either be put toward the police and fire pension fund or to the city's reserves. The $200,000 represents the city's general fund support for the Ecology Center. As many of the folks have mentioned, there are private donations. We make additional revenues from the camps that are done there, but that $200,000 is the additional tax support above and beyond all those other efforts.
But the Ecology Center's contribution to closing our $9.5 million gap is-
Zero.
...$8,100, I think, in your proposed recommendations.
There may be a small materials and supplies reduction in the $9.5 million.
Thank you, sir.
There's one thing about, I'd like to say something about Wally, if I may. I'm a Syracuse grad. I went to the Maxwell School, and this is a good man. He's well-trained, well-educated. I'm sure he's trying to do the right thing, and I'm frustrated with these kind of decisions as well as anybody else in this room. But I think this is a man that does bring a lot to the table, and I don't even know you, but I think where you're coming from is a good spot, Wally. So, I just want to say thank you.
[inaudible]
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Almond McCall, and I did not prepare anything particular, but I'm here in support of the Evanston Community Media Center, and I just wanted to speak on, I'm an Evanston resident, I've been an Evanston resident for many years, and I just wanted to speak on a couple of issues as far as the-
Would you give your address, please?
I'm at 840 Elmwood Street.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I think we all, the council and everyone here, and everyone in Evanston, should really think about the arts and what that means for Evanston. We really have been known, and this is what we are, is an artistic community that supports art and gives a voice to anyone in the community, and that's what the Evanston Community Media Center does, not any other medium. You want to say the internet? The internet doesn't really compete with television, because everyone in Evanston watches TV, but not everybody in Evanston has access to the internet. And I just want to say that we really have to think about our image that we're creating here, because what Evanston Community Media Center does, it allows us to see ourselves on TV.
I need you to wrap it up, please.
All right. I just wanted to say that, that we really should keep this center open, because what that does, we have something that's very, very valuable, and it's a television station. And what that could mean in the future to build on and to create and for us to use, there's no better way for us to get information out to each other and for every, each individual person-
Thank you.
-to have a voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff Smith, Jill Shacter, and Tana Paul, and then in an hour and five minutes, we will have used up our 45 minutes of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison. Evanston has been a leader and should continue to lead. I would urge the City Council to pass a resolution, not only in support of HB 174 or a bill like it, which would not only provide a more consistent revenue stream for the state of Illinois, but would provide property tax relief to many Evanstonians, but also to pass a resolution supporting a progressive income tax in the state of Illinois, so we can get away from the regressive tax structure that we have. Secondly, I would urge the city to strengthen its partnership with the legislative team so that we're not subject to unfunded mandates, and so that we can get something resembling the per capita revenues for libraries that we've seen Skokie and Womack get in recent years. Third, in the upcoming discussions of the budget cuts and the priorities, I urge every member of this council to stay away from ward-by-ward discussions, to avoid looking at this as a matter of parochialism, because once we start down that road, there's absolutely no end to it. We cannot pit neighborhoods against each other in Evanston. Items like the branch libraries, the Ecology Center, the Media Center are part of what make us leader. They move us towards our goal of being the most livable city in the United States, and Evanston is nothing if not a whole community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Tana Paul, and I'm not an Evanston resident, but I've worked in the Evanston community since 1986 in social services. I work for Metropolitan Family Services, and during the 24 years, I have been involved in a, excuse me, child abuse prevention program, and we help families in that program and children from getting involved in the DCFS system, from being placed in foster care, and more importantly, from being abused. I guess it's just honestly been my privilege to work with these people of Evanston, even though I don't live here. Over these 24 years, I have seen so much motivation on the parts of parents, resiliency when they've suffered horrible traumas as a child themselves, being beaten, being sexually abused, watching the murder of one parent at the hand of the other. So, I, you know, honestly, the, the fight that they have in themselves not to continue the cycle of abuse and pass it on to their children has been truly remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. I believe everyone has spoken who's signed up. City Manager, could we have the capital improvement plan and other funds presentation?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I would like to propose maybe putting that presentation off for at least a little while this morning. I think there's a lot of folks have spoken. I know the council's anxious to have more discussion. Clearly, the state of your other funds and your capital budget is very important and would like to, to get to that. So, maybe if there is time, maybe in an hour, hour and a half, we could make that presentation. But instead, I'd like to just walk through the answers, documents that we provided, and then perhaps let the council get into some discussion, and we can have that presentation a little bit later on.
That would be fine.
Before I do that, while we're all here this morning, there is a team of about 50 volunteers canvassing Evanston with these door hangers. And so, if you get home this, later this morning and find this door hanger, members of the council and members of the community, this is advertising our Affordable Living Fair, which is next Saturday, January 30th, at the Fleetwood Jordane Center. As the council knows, we've been very fortunate to get a variety of funding for Home Weatherization Assistance Program. So, this event next Saturday is the kickoff for this, and we hope that this is, in essence, free money for community members to weatherize their homes. It's a, it's a great opportunity. We've heard speakers this morning talk about sustainability. This is one of the simplest, easiest ways people can help manage their energy costs by weatherizing their homes. So, if you get home this afternoon and see this door hanger, we have community volunteers, Northwestern students, all out canvassing communities this morning doing that. We provided to the council yesterday, and it's also on our budget website, this document, and we, there are hard copies if anyone would like a hard copy, you didn't bring it with this morning, regarding questions and answers that were raised at the last budget workshop. So, I'd like to walk through this quickly so that you know what we have here. It starts, there's a table of contents, but I'm going to walk through quickly, page by page. Page two deals with some miscellaneous budget line item questions. Page three talks about the impact of the elimination of the structural inspector position. Page four talks about the impacts from the police department of their reductions. Okay.
Could I have a copy? Thank you, Charles.
That's correct.
As you walk page, you're just telling us what each page is addressing.
That's correct. Right. Rather, I'm happy to go into any more detail on any of these. I don't know if the council wants to.
Just slow down in between pages.
Okay, great. No problem.
Flip the pages, because we, just trying to keep up with.
All right. So again, page, page three deals with impacts of reductions in the Community Development Department.
Okay.
Page four talks a little bit about the impacts from the Police Department's reductions. These are the $1.5 million additional reductions.
It's very possible that everyone has had a chance to really study each one of these communications.
No, it's not possible.
But I have not been able to do that. So I think it would be beneficial to just, as opposed to what the page deals with, just give us a statement of the essence of it.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I flew in late last night. It would work for me to.
I've been submerged in it.
Absolutely. And this is important information, which you all wanted, so I didn't want to go forward this morning.
It's important, and I've read part of it, but not all of it.
All right.
So is that okay?
Absolutely. Let me go back to the beginning, then on page two, it dealt with the additional budget cuts from the Administrative Services Department. There is a $25,000 sales tax rebate reduction, a $10,000 reduction of additional overtime costs, a $3,000 reduction in budget printing costs, a $5,000 reduction in those fees associated with our pre-employment medical, and a $5,000 reduction for evening hours and Saturday overtime for the collections department. Again, this is part of the $1.5 million additional budget reductions. On page five, there's a answer to a question regarding the additional savings in the Public Works Administration. The $100,000 that is proposed in that additional $1.5 million is a result of a reduction in administrative analytical support provided to the department. That would be an additional employee layoff. Page six is the response from the Department of Parks, Forestry, Recreation and Facilities Management, dealing with their reductions with the additional $1.5 million. The $200,000 regarding the Ecology Center, which I referred to a few moments ago, but this goes into details of the programs that are currently provided at the Ecology Center.
Well, before you leave that, I know you gave an explanation, and you suggested that the, the real reduction, you know, would that be the actual $2,000, $200,000? That would end up closing the Ecology Center, right?
The $200,000 that is proposed as part of the $1.5 million of additional cuts would be this remaining city support. The Ecology Center generates money from day camps, it generates money from other uses, but this is the support the city provides. That's not to say that there could not be another solution to keep the Ecology Center open because it does generate revenue, but this $200,000 represents the general fund support of the Ecology Center, above and beyond those other revenues.
Alderman Holmes.
I just don't think we can say it enough in terms of these additional cuts is the below the line. If you remember when we received the first budget, we have the above the line, which is the 9.5, 9.5 million, and then below the line is the 1.5. This is below the line, which is.
Secondary consideration.
Absolutely so, that people don't get that confused, because it, you know, I think everybody's thinking it's part of the above the line, the 9.5, and it's not.
That's absolutely correct, and I hope at some point today, we will have a discussion of whether or not we want to, and if we do want to, how much we want to put into the reserves to replace what we took out, and if we do want this one and a half million or if we want half a million of it to go into reserves, or if we do not wish to do anything for reserves. But I think that we all understand that issue well enough to discuss it and put it to rest today, which does not mean that we wouldn't have to go and take from the one and a half million if we decide not to cut the library branches or do some of the things that are in the other proposal. I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager.
The document from the Parks Department goes on on page seven. Again, these are all explanations of their additional cuts as part of the $1.5 million below the line. The Fleetwood Jordan Clerk, part-time, $100,000. The Levy Senior Center Program Manager, $150,000. The Levy Senior Bus Program, and that's a portion of that $150,000. At the Robert Crown Center, on the top of page eight, $50,000 reduction for a Robert Crown Center Office Clerk and a Robert Crown Center Recreation Aid. In the Parks Forestry Division, middle of page eight, $150,000, and that would be parts of three positions, a Parks Forestry Worker Two and a Parks Forestry Worker Three, two positions. The bottom of page eight, additional reductions in the Facilities Management Division, $70,000. Facilities Management Worker Two, General Tradesman, and the impacts of that reduction. And then on the top of page nine, the additional reduction in city overtime support for the Fourth of July celebrations, $30,000. Going on then to page 11, a memorandum dealing with the administrative cuts, and I believe this is, this is a duplicate of another memorandum that we've already been through. On page 12, a memorandum from Grant Farrar Corporation Council in response to the council's inquiry regarding how the department would be reorganized, and it talks about additional support for litigation. It talks about the transfer of responsibilities of administrative adjudication from the Finance Department to the Law Department, and it talks about the transfer of responsibilities for liquor licensing from the City Manager's office to the Law Department. Page 13 is a response from the Fire Chief regarding the impacts of the $275,000 reduction in the Fire Department shift staffing overtime. Again, the chief went through this, or, excuse me, Mr. Whaley went through this at the last meeting, and it talks about how that overtime would be used for those firefighters who are either on leave or sick, and how that would be balanced out. On page 14, some additional questions answered, explain how each reduction, except for Administrative Services, impacts. Will the service stop or continue? Talks about the Children's Dental Clinic. And an additional word about the Children's Dental Clinic matter, Mayor, members of the council. We have been contacted by a local foundation that has a specific interest in this, and they are talking to us and actually are, have found a partner foundation that would like to present a proposal to fund that service, by actually providing it. They would not give us the money, but they would come into our facilities with dentists and appropriate dental assistants to continue that under their responsibility. So we're still working on that piece, but we will keep you posted. We have no additional information today regarding that. The elimination of the .6 long-term care ombudsman, those services would continue. It's grant-funded. The next question from Alderman Grover regarding the number of hours the dental clinic is open and the demographics of the participants, and that is detailed on page 15. At the bottom of page 15, what will the allocation for the Mental Health Board look like with reduced funding levels? The reduction would have an impact on all the organizations and what has been the past practice. I understand the council has asked the Mental Health Board, once a new dollar amount has been determined, to revisit their recommendations and come back to the City Council with a reallocated allocation based on the amount of money that was budgeted by the City Council.
Alderman Grover.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Bob Kowitz. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also think the Mental Health Board has submitted to us a memorandum as to exactly what a hypothetical 25% cut in its allocations budget would mean if spread across the board among the agencies that it funds. Want to make sure you saw it? It's there somewhere?
I saw it. I have no idea where I put it, but I have certainly read it.
Page 17 deals with a question from Alderman Burris on the additional revenue for yard waste, how it was calculated, and that is explained through the sticker costs and the number of households. Page 18 responds to an Alderman Rainey question regarding the calculation for additional refuse revenue. Does the estimate count on all households utilizing larger cans? And that is, we're estimating it would be 70% of all households would unify the larger cans, and there's some additional financial information listed there. Page 19, a question from Alderman Grover regarding if the city had contacted District 65 to help with the cost of crossing guards. We have, and they have indicated they do not have funds at this time to support that, and the federal government is not funding the state for our schools program. We would continue to work with them for those opportunities. On page 20 is additional information regarding branch libraries and usage. This is information that you had, the council had previously seen and was placed in this packet so that the community members could see that. So this is actually from the end of December. So that is page 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29. Page 30, top 10 cities with non-Evanston users at Evanston libraries. Again, this information was provided at the end of December to the council, and we just placed it in this packet for the community to also have the information. Page 32 deals with the impacts to both revenues and expenditures of closing the beaches at 7:30 instead of 8:00 p.m. 7:30 closure would directly save $19,000 in lakefront staff salaries. Saying that in the last hour, $200 was collected last season of the hour of closing. It also talks about hours in Chicago, Willmette and Winnetka for beach use. Page 33, a question regarding how janitorial services will be covered by their employees with the janitorial reductions in our Parks Recreation Community Services Department, and there's a response on the specifics for the Robert Crown Center and the Levy Center. Page 34 is a response to questions from Alderman Holmes with the possibility of not treating trees for Dutch elm disease or the emerald ash borer every year, and what savings would be realized. There is information regarding the emerald ash that staff currently does not treat. Public ash trees against emerald ash borer. Then the Dutch elm disease fungicide injection program would be, savings could be realized by eliminating the tree program would be $160,000. And additional information on page 34. On page 35 are some statistics on the elm trees that have been removed, and that goes on to page 36. Page 37 is a response to a question regarding hours for Recreation Center hours, how those would be impacted by the proposed budget at the Chandler Newburger Center, Mason Park, Fleetwood Jordan Center, Robert Crown Center, and then the Dog Beach and Boat Ramp. Page 39 is another duplication, unfortunately, of information that was previously discussed, and that goes 39, 40, 41, and 42. Page 44 is questions answered regarding the Evanston Community Media Center. Why can't school districts share a channel? They could share a channel. Mr. McCray and I met with Mr. Bartelbaugh with a couple of different entities. Over the course of the last two weeks, we spoke with Evanston Township High School. They have some interest in working with ECMC as far as hosting them, their facilities out there, at their campus, so those discussions continue. Mr. McCray and I also met with a senior management representative from Comcast regarding their interests. There is no interest on their part to sell back a channel. They do not care how we manage the four peg channels that we have. If the school districts chose to combine operations on one channel, really that is within their purview and the City Council's purview. So Comcast does not see themselves as a resource as far as selling back a channel or channel placement. They're in a process of continuing to connect their systems throughout northern Illinois, and they are not yet to Evanston as far as that larger system-wide connection. They've done a lot of work in the western suburbs and the southern suburbs over the last year or two, and they don't have a specific timeframe as far as changing channel locations, so that's not something that they're interested in. If they, if the City Council wanted to have Comcast run public access, there was a general indication that Comcast would agree to that, and Evanston residents could use the Skokie production facility that Comcast has, and then that channel would be available on our system. There's some question from a technological perspective how that would happen, but Comcast staff is looking at to see how that would occur. What else haven't I talked about? The Washington DC, what they're doing, Alderman Rainey raised those issues. We're still trying to ascertain from the District of Columbia the funding structure there, information about how they became a nonprofit, their fundraising plan, their board, how the city can help them sustain themselves. We also met with representatives of Northwestern University in the last two weeks. Northwestern was not able to make any commitments as far as space or funding to be helpful to them, talking about advertising, trends in franchise agreements, the impact of AT&amp;T to revenue from Comcast, and then the clarification of the use of Channel 18 and Channel 19. Page 47 of the packet, once again, shares information that we had at the council meeting two weeks ago. City staff also took it upon themselves to do some additional resources, research into the financial wherewithal of the Evanston Community Media Center. We received from the Internal Revenue Service their filing of their 990 tax form. Since they are a nonprofit 501(c) organization, that form indicates that at the end of the fiscal year ending June 30, 2008, ECMC had net assets of $585,000, and of this amount, $336,000 was classified as cash and cash equivalents. We've asked ECMC for updated information on this, and we have not received that, but I believe generally that they are, they have $200,000 in funds available to them, $100,000 approximately from capital money that they've received from us and have not spent, that they've used for capital replacement, and an additional $100,000 as a reserve. Again, we've asked Mr. Bartelbaugh for the most specific information, had not received it as of, as of yesterday. Page 51, Alderman Grover, supplemental inquiries on a variety of different questions. The Evanston Hospital paid the city for the walkway over Central Street. We receive $25,000 a year for that. The city paying tuition reimbursement, that is a proposed cut, but is currently budgeted at $65,000. Talks about our purchasing division, what we can do to make better use of economies with our vendors. Page 52, details transfers from our TIF districts to the General Fund for Administration, special details, community development support. The Hart Tree TIF, $141,000. The Ridge TIF, $120,000. The Southwest TIF, $24,000. The W, the Washington National, the other Downtown TIF, $325,000, and then the West Evanston TIF, $25,000. Page 53 talks about, answers questions regarding conversion to a public library district. This is from our city attorney, and some of this was already discussed this morning about mechanisms in which to do that. If the council would like, later on, we could talk more about the financing mechanisms associated with this. My understanding is that this is an additional tax levy, not a supplemental. Additional tax levy does not replace a tax levy, so the residents of Evanston would be paying not only the tax levy they pay to the city of Evanston, but would be paying a new tax levy on top of that to the library district. Page 54 deals with the question of special service areas, and the city attorney and the assistant city manager go on about the particular legal requirements if a special service area was created. On page 57, the assistant city manager and the library director have done some calculations as to what a special service area could look like and the amount of monies that could be raised if such a special service area were implemented. On page 59 and 60, 61, 62 have some maps to kind of give you a sense of where the library users are so as far as dealing with specific boundaries. If the council wished to discuss that, to give you some ideas of where those, those boundaries could lie. boundaries could lie. And that takes us through page sixty-two. Page sixty-three, memorandum from the Parks and Recreation Department, talking about the specific impacts of their reductions that are contained in the nine and a half million The business offices of the department, the Robert Crown Center, the Chandler Newburger Center, the Fleetwood Jordane Center, Fleetwood Jordane Theater, various community outreach programs, the Levy Senior Center, the Church Street Boat Ramp and Dog Beach, those storage facilities, general beach operations, the Robert Crown Ice Rink, our tennis operations, our special recreation operations, our golf program, our Parks and Forestry General Support, our Horticulture Maintenance Program, our Parkway Tree Maintenance Program, our Dutch elm disease control program, our tree planting program, our private elm tree insurance program, our Dutch elm inoculation program, the small reductions to the Ecology Center, which were previously discussed, the Ecology Day Camps, the Cultural Fund Program, the Arts Council, the Noyes Cultural Arts Center, our arts camps, the ethnic arts festivals, the Starlight Concerts, Facilities Management Administration, maintenance of the Civic Center, and miscellaneous support services provided by the department. Those are all varying degrees, but most of them are in the less than five thousand dollar category per each. Page sixty-nine deals with the possibility of not treating trees for the Dutch elm disease or the emerald ash borer for a year. If we skipped one year of injecting elms, the savings would be one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The effect of a one-year postponement would be that twenty-one-hundred-plus elm trees due to be injected over the next three years, but again, become susceptible to contracting Dutch elm disease for a one-year period, but there is no way to predict exactly how many would contract the disease within that timeframe. Page seventy is a question regarding inventory of property the city's owned and leases, and that is contained on a table which starts on page seventy-one. Page seventy-one deals primarily with our cell tower agreements, which there are three, six, seven, eight cell tower agreements on various city properties throughout the community. Beginning on page seventy-two are other lease agreements. The first couple are with the, first is with the Metropolitan Water Resource District, the Evanston Willmatt Golf Course Association, our lease with Foster Field, which is with District sixty-five. The next one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-odd are specific leases with individuals and groups at the Noyes Arts Center, and details the annual lease amounts associated with that. Our lease agreement with the Skokie Park District for the Pooch Park, the lease agreement of a building at seven oh six Main Street with the organization Seven Oh Six Main Street, L.L.C., lease agreement at ten sixteen Grove and fourteen fifty-four Maple with the Evanston Y.M.C.A., an agreement with the United States Postal Service for parking spaces at our the Maple Street Garage. Additional parking lot leases with the Union Pacific Railroad, the Chicago Transit Authority and Northwestern University, the lease of space at eight sixty Chicago Avenue for City Newsstand, Inc., lease agreement with Family Focus Center, and then a variety of leases with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. There's what, about five or six of those. Other leased properties, the Lighthouse, League Women Voters has a lease agreement for room ten thirty of this building, the Central Street Train Station, the Evanston Arts Center, a couple of other miscellaneous easements. On page seventy is a complete listing of all of the tenants at the Noyes Cultural Arts Center, and that number is probably about twenty-five or thirty specific leases and agreements there. On page eighty of eighty, response to budget question, fees charged to sports organizations, and it talks about the various groups that use that. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, I certainly were prepared to talk in any detail about these, these questions. There are a handful of questions that the council brought up last, two weeks ago Saturday, which we've not provided information for. Mr. Lyons, I imagine that's probably in the less than half dozen. We quite frankly ran out of time and resources to get that all done for you, but certainly we're prepared to speak to that. And again, Mr. Lyons does have a presentation, which I would hope at some point before we leave today, we could, we could cover. Otherwise, we're here to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Alderman Wilson.
I know I have this somewhere in my volume of materials, but the lease for the South Branch Library, I was, I couldn't find the amount of that lease and the termination date. If anybody has that.
Mary is, Mary's in back. If she could come out, we can get that unless other staff who's here. We put the staff in the Aldermanic Library to make more room for. Maybe, Madam Mayor, we can come back.
She's, she's on her way, or at least I saw her there.
Yeah, I see her. She's just getting, getting her information. We can maybe come back if there's another question in the meantime.
All right, does anyone else have another question? I'm sorry, I'm taking questions from the council now, not from the public. I think we're waiting for Mary.
Okay.
Alderman Burris.
I'll ask, actually, a quick question that came up with a couple of people about the tax reform bill, HB one seventy-four. Could you just let me know, what guarantees do we have that those taxes are, would actually come back to the city of Evanston? Can we get, I know that you've talked about that.
Alderman Burris, members of the council, that's one question we, you asked us for additional information. I've contacted the Illinois Municipal League, and this is not a bill that's on their radar screen. So they were having to get back to me as something that, with additional information. They had not gotten any other inquiries. They, I'd shared that it came from, asked me local, so they were following up. This was from maybe Monday or Tuesday of this week that I heard back from them. So I apologize, I don't have any additional information.
I believe that I have a meeting Wednesday morning of the Northwest Municipal Conference Legislative Committee, and that's on my radar screen to ask.
City manager, I think your-
I'm sorry, Mary.
Assistant city manager had.
I just wanted to point out that in earlier versions of the bill, that the IML and the city representatives were lobbying very strongly to keep the one-tenth distribution that we currently get on the, the amount, to keep that in at the same percentage. And there were a lot of talks of, will it change in the beginning? Will it be different? Will there be part of it sent to the schools for the first year to help them out? So there were a lot of different variations on how the funding would actually come back to the local economies on that one-tenth side, not on the nine-tenth side that would go to the state.
Thank you. Mary.
Madam Mayor, city council, the lease for the South Branch Library is fifty thousand five hundred dollars per year, and we have a hundred and fifty-day out clause, and the cost for that would be twenty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
When did, Madam Mayor?
Go right ahead.
When, when did we last renew it?
The lease is up for renewal in April of two thousand twelve, twenty thousand.
And it's a three-year lease, correct?
No, it was a-
It'd be last renewed.
I think it was a little longer than, than three years.
Longer than that, okay. Thank you.
And just for clarification, if we were to give notice, we'd have to give the notice a hundred and fifty days in advance. We would pay the rent for that hundred and fifty days, and then we would pay the additional twenty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty to get out of the lease early. Is that-
The twenty-one thousand would be the out clause, the hundred and fifty days that we would have to give notice.
Right, but that doesn't-
So we would pay for, for that piece after we were, if we vacated.
After the hundred and fifty days are done, it's an additional amount, in addition to the rent for the hundred and fifty days, just for clarity. No?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so we, we give notice?
We give notice, and we have five months to vacate, and we would have to-
Pay, go right ahead. While we're there.
Okay, so there's no additional penalty beyond the notice period? That's what I meant, that's what I'm-
Okay. And the administrative officer of the library is nodding his head, no, so.
No, there's no additional penalty. That's the last five months of the rent.
Okay.
And we budgeted that in terms of the proposed budget for next year. It's included in the budget, the last five months.
Okay, so that's, in other words, we're assuming we're going to pay that last five months' rent in the net savings that's allocated in the budget.
That's correct, that's correct. And then there are other, Alderman Wilson, members of the council, there are other costs that we anticipate in closing the libraries, which have been accounted for with the reduction. So the numbers you're seeing is not, is the net savings with those additional costs associated with it. We need to move out and things like that, so we've accounted for those costs.
Alderman Fisk.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to confirm my understanding that the conversion to a public library district would require a referendum, is that correct? And an SSA would not?
If I could have Mr. Farrar speak to that.
Yes, Madam Alderman, with respect to the SSA, the options on that are outlined in page fifty-four through fifty-seven. With respect to the conversion to a library district issue, which is, has been posed by several members of the audience today, the issue that is outlined on page fifty-three, upon some further analysis with respect to the conversion to the district, option one is actually foreclosed by statute. There was an arcane provision that I came across, so that takes option one off the table, the board resolution and public referendum. However, option two and three, you have the resolution, which is submitted to council upon approval, and then option three is the referendum, which requires a petition signed by ten percent of the registered voters. I'm not aware of the current registered voter tally in Evanston, but I believe based upon some prior research, that would be somewhere in the vicinity of four to four thousand five hundred voters.
And that would be to get on the ballot for November two thousand and ten.
Correct.
Alderman Holmes.
Sorry, I have to go back to another page. My understanding is that if we didn't do the elm trees, we could save one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for one year. What, what would be the savings on tree planting if we didn't do it for one year? And I'm asking that question because when I look at the, the elm trees, there was a budget line, the line item says seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, so evidently there's carryover. So I'm assuming the same thing is in terms of tree planting, which has a line item of three hundred and ninety-three thousand. So what would be the savings for one year if we didn't plant for one year?
Alderman Holmes, I'll ask Doug Gainer, our director of Parks, Forest, Recreation, to, to come in and comment to that.
See ya.
And Mr. Gainer, I don't know if you've heard the question or not, it was regarding planting.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I believe the number is about one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in tree planting.
And the hundred and sixty thousand for inoculation?
Right.
So one's one sixty, one's one sixty-five?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
At three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Mr. Lyons, I have a question. If we convert to a library district, I have been promised that taxes would go down. I do not see how that would be possible. The property tax would go down, but the extent of the tax bill would still be the same, and if it included the branches, it, it would mean an increase in our taxes, would it not? Unless we cut something else.
The, the change in the mechanism of the administration does not in itself change the levy. So we will have an additional levy. It will not be necessarily an additional amount. The new governing board could decide to have smaller services, you know, anything-
They could, but they won't.
But, and, and I have gone through a, in another community, going to a district, and it's, it's possible, it's done. It did result eventually in higher costs due to added administration. It's just one example, but that's just the life cycle of, of any public body when they, when they try to keep on going down the road. What initially, we've had a lot of discussions with the library director regarding that.
So for those of us whose concerns are foreclosure and keeping the taxes down so that we don't force people out of town, that does not resolve our problems.
No, the, the change to the district doesn't change the service level or the service level costs.
Thank you very much. Alderman Burris.
I actually want a clarification and then a possible suggestion. The, from Alderman Grover's question last time about the crossing guards and the district that they've said, no, we're not going, we don't have the funding to help with the crossing guards. Have we thought about approaching the PTAs about volunteer crossing guards? I know when I was growing up, which I realize is a long time ago, that we had parents out on the street corners, or we had some of the older students on the street corners. And it seems to me that we're, we're hearing a call from people that come up and say, pick me, I want to volunteer, I want to be part of this community, instead of continually paying people to do things, really getting people involved in the community. I think standing on a street corner and helping kids get across the street and getting to know your, your, your neighbor's kids is, is a great way to do that. So that's one of my questions. Another is the Dog Beach. I know we are considering reducing paying someone to sit at the Dog Beach and watch people and check and see if they have tokens. I take my dog to the Pooch Park. It's on an honor system. They have volunteers there as well to check, to make sure that your dog has a tag, and you can get fined if you do not have your tag on your dog. So it doesn't seem like we, we can, we can do something similar at the, at the Dog Beach here in, here in Evanston as well. So just, I think as we go along, we just need to think more about volunteer opportunities, what are other communities doing in getting more people involved? Also, thank you very much for the nine ninety form of, for ECMC. And everyone, if you want a, see any not-for-profits nine ninety form, you can go to guidestar.com, and you can register there, it's free, and pull up any not-for-profits tax form to find out how they're spending their money. The not-for-profits that receive money from the Mental Health Board, it'd be great to get their nine ninety. I've looked at a few of them. Their funding, a lot of these not-for-profits are on a shoestring, but they're doing their best to look at a whole spectrum of funding, everything from government to not only local but state. They do a lot of fundraising, so, and service fees as well. So they really are having a very diverse budget is what we need, I think, for our not-for-profits. And being on community development a few years ago, I had a chance to look a lot of their budgets much more deeply, and I think it's something that would be very helpful for us as well. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see any more lights, so I guess I'll throw out the question, Alderman Grover, wait a sec, that I asked earlier, which is at some point I think we need to somewhat poll the group and see if there is interest in increasing the budget cuts in order to add money to our, our funds or to the police and fire pension. And so having thrown that out, I, I do believe that that would be very responsible budgeting. And while I don't think this community can handle another million and a half in cuts, I think at least a half a million going into reserves would be very wise, given the incredible problems the state of Illinois is facing in terms of their budget, and my lack of faith that money from the state will be forthcoming in the way that it has been, and it hasn't been a whole lot, but I am quite concerned that we may end up with less money coming to the city from the state than we had before. So I wonder if anyone else is interested in adding to the reserves, or if you feel understandably that these budget cuts are as much as the community can handle. And now I've lost track of whose light went on first. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank Wally, Mr. Bobkowitz, for his proposed budget, for the additional reductions, for asking not only the council but the whole community to think more broadly and deeply about not just patching up a nine and a half million dollar hole in the budget for the next fiscal year, but to look ahead, to think about how we can be in a better position a year from now. So I would like to consider some of the administrative services, additional budget cuts, and there are others that I think we could probably tolerate in the next year that would help us.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
And I also want to echo the thanks to Wally, but also particularly to the city staff, because the city staff has spent a very large amount of time going through these and making very difficult decisions and, and trying to make the right decisions for what's going to least impact the people of Evanston. And, and one of the things that I believe is that it's not the things and the places in Evanston that make Evanston special. What's special are the people that are here and the people that choose to be here. So, you know, whether it's, it's a tiny branch library or an old beat-up- know, whether it's a tiny branch library or an old beat-up ice rink or a coffee shop, it's the interaction and the community interaction that happens at these places. So, I want everybody to remember, this is going to be a collaborative effort. We have to work together. A lot of things are going to be impacted. If you go, and you all don't have the benefit of these lists, but just, you know, going through the asterisks, you know, you're going to notice changes next year. You're going to notice hours are reduced. You're going to notice lines are longer. You're going to notice that response times take a bit longer as well. You're going to notice that if we make additional cuts, that the Fourth of July mess isn't going to be cleaned up the next day. So, you know, you can call me when it happens, but this is the reason why. And these are hard choices that we're all having to make. So, with that said, I do think that we need, do need to dig a little bit deeper and make some further cuts and apply some additional money to the reserves. And also, for the other reasons, but there is a possibility that revenues will be even worse than they are this year, because I don't see any significant improvement. You read in the press that, okay, the turnaround is coming. I don't see a turnaround. And I don't know if anybody else has seen a turnaround. I'm seeing things getting worse. So, I think that we need to be prepared for that. I don't think that we should be in a position where we're dipping further and further and further into our reserves next year and perhaps the following year. I do have a couple of items on the list that I really do not want to cut. I'll just throw those out there for what it's worth. I do not think that we should eliminate the ecology center. I do not think that we should eliminate the Fleetwood Jordan program. I do not think that we should eliminate the senior bus program from Levy. And from the information I've read, you know, it might sound like a somewhat innocuous item on the, on the list here, but if we're going to keep our equipment and facilities running, I don't think that we should eliminate this facilities management position for the, Facilities Management Division.
Thank you. Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
Wally, if you would just once again clarify the state of our reserves for the public and why you think we should put some additional funds aside for fire and police pension at this time?
Alderman John Baptiste, Members of the Council, we are projecting, and Marty, if you can come up with the number quicker than I can.
The current reserve?
What our projection is for February twenty-eight, twenty-ten?
For the, for the, a month and a half from now to be just over twelve million dollars. And when you see twelve million, that seems like a lot. On an eighty-five to ninety million dollar general fund, that's a month and a half that we can run without revenues coming in. And to the mayor's statement, if the state started, and they are starting to pay later, cash flow becomes an issue.
And that's with a projected, that's with the projected take of approximately one point seven to two million dollars?
Correct.
So, that would be our fund balance with that take?
Yes.
So, we're already, as part of balancing the current year budget, the council last fall authorized a take up to two million from reserves. We believe it's going to be about one seven as we sit here today. On the police and fire pension issue, as you all know, there is a line on the levy, so we are paying into that every year. And we're projecting, Marty, the current number for both the police and fire pension funds, the underfunding is approximately?
The underfunding of approximately one hundred and fifty-eight million is the total unfunded liability for both funds.
So, if the council chooses to take additional general fund operating revenue and make that transfer into the fund, it's a small increment, but it's, it will help us with making up that difference, hopefully in a quicker way. We're responsible under Illinois state law to do this by 2033. As you know, there's been discussions about extending that deadline. My recommendation to the council is regardless what the ultimate deadline from the state General Assembly is, we should do what we can to continue to pay off that, that money.
Mr. Manager, just one thing on that subject. We've had discussions at the pension board level. Is our, our assumption on interest rate return correct? And the actuarial assumption is a thirty-year assumption, but there's still pressure when you don't make that assumption in a given year to lower it. And one of the ways to maintain the integrity of the actuarial assumptions is if the city's committed to making additional payments when it can, when it's needed, then the integrity of the actuarial structure can remain. And we don't try to market time changing our interest rates up and down because of actual performance. That's not the purpose of that actuary. They're for the long term, and we could help by doing short-term infusions when needed. And it gives you a lot more flexibility then.
But once the state pays, if they pay, if they pay in a slower manner, if they pay at all, we can't take money out of the pensions to float our expenses for a while. So, it would be better, in my view, being very concerned about payments from the state of Illinois, to put the money into reserves where we could use it.
And one of the ways to address both would be at the end of any given year, when we know how our cash flow did for that year, to make that evaluation and then, and also try and project what the state's doing in the next year, but not at the beginning of a year or not when we're trying to balance or set next year's budget. It's more so, how did we do this year in a backward look?
And Madam Mayor, since you raised the subject, maybe Mr. Lyons could tell us the current amount that the state of Illinois is in arrears to the city of Evanston?
We're, we were just looking at this. The only place where they're really in arrears is in the income tax. They voucher money into another department of the state and call it paid, but then we have to go to that other department. So, we're approximately two months behind, which with a five point seven million dollar annual income tax, we're a little bit more than a million dollars behind in our income tax receipts.
So, we're having to use cash from other internal sources and basically to float a loan to the state of Illinois to cover our, our day-to-day, week-to-week expenses because we are a million dollars in arrear from the state of Illinois.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
First, let me say, I certainly think that we should put some money in the reserve if, if we can find it. Then, I want to say to you all, I'm, I'm hearing what you're saying, but I am zeroing in on nine point five million in any way that we can. And so, therefore, Wally, could you please, it'll probably be Doug again, but on the pooch park, we expended twenty-six thousand dollars, and I know that's our share.
Tell us what page you're on, Delores.
On page seventy-five of eighty.
Thank you.
That is our share with, for Skokie. I want to know, how do we recoup that? Because I would assume that we're just not paying that, that there would have to be the folk who use the park, right?
Right.
So, what is the fee? What is the fee? And does it cover it?
No, it doesn't cover it. This was an agreement that was made several years ago to split the cost on the operation with Skokie.
Okay.
It does not cover our costs.
So, then what do we need to do to cover our costs in terms of increasing the use of the people who use pooch park?
Well, I'm not sure that there's an opportunity there as much as an opportunity to start charging a higher fee and for Skokie residents to use the dog beach. And we're looking at that as an alternative to try to raise additional revenues. It doesn't, it doesn't happen at the pooch park. Skokie, the park district manages the pooch park.
Right.
And we just pay a fee, splitting the cost of maintenance. And that's what you see in the budget.
Oh, I understand. I understand what we do. I'm just trying to figure out how to cover the cost.
Yeah, the revenue stream that we receive are from the residents of Evanston who have gotten the tags to use that park.
And Mr. Gainer, how much more do we have to charge the residents of Evanston?
I'll have to get that.
Right.
I think that's the Alderman's question.
That's, that's my question.
Yeah, I don't have that off the top.
And what do we currently charge now?
Good question. I mean, that's changed too, but I can, I'll get that for you.
We'll get back, and we'll also get back the numbers. It'll be easy math.
The fee for pooch park is relatively small compared to the beach.
Okay.
We'll, we'll take that as a question, Alderman Holmes, and have it for the next question.
And I know it's not a lot, but it is, you know, wherever we can sell.
And I would just add very briefly that there's a certain amount of requirements that the county has placed on us at the dog beach or any dog park in the county. I'm not sure if that's being enforced to the level that the county has. And that's why our dog beach, we do have monitoring going on. However, we're looking at a suggestion that was made earlier about using volunteers who would put in a certain number of hours and get a free token for their dog. And there would be no money, you know, exchanged out. We wouldn't lose much in that sense. We'd probably gain, so we wouldn't have to have staff.
Okay, great.
Alderman Burris?
Once again, thank you to Wally for a very transparent process and a wide dissemination of this information. I've never seen this before. It's wonderful. And I really appreciate also the additional one point five million in reductions. Not so much that I think that we can do the one, the whole one point five million. I agree, would be great to put in reserves. But I think what it has allowed us to do is just do some mixing and matching with the one point five million and the nine point five million to say, okay, where are the, where can we reduce services, but maybe not cut services completely? I agree one hundred percent with Alderman Holmes of what can we not do for a year? Can we not plant new trees for a year? Can we not inoculate trees for a year? That, those two together would basically give the branch libraries a year of reprieve to get their, whatever plan to do for fundraising. It helps, it would help the EMC, ECMC. It would help human services. I personally would rather care about, you know, the elderly getting to where they need to go and single mothers having daycare than our trees being trimmed perfectly. I just think we need to put people before trees. I will go, go to the mat on that. The other thing that I think we need to look at and get an independent assessment about is the firefighters redeployment cut. I've talked to people in the city of Chicago Fire Department. I think this might be unsafe for us. And I, we haven't talked much about it. And I just think we need a lot more information about reducing staff and consistently reducing staff that are really saving our lives. So, just if we can get more information, that would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
I would like to just echo what Colleen said about the reduction in the fire department. I think that it is, it's such an important topic. It deserves a lot of discussion. It should be right up there with libraries. This is about our, safety of our, our family, our friends, our, our homes, our property. Secondly, I'd like to say that I totally agree with the fact that we need to, to start contributing to reserves, back, building back what we have taken out. And I think whether it's now or at the end of the year, as some, as Marty suggested, a contribution to the Fireman's, Police and Fireman Pension Fund, I think is very important. It may be small, but it's, it's the hurdle we have to get over. We don't usually contribute beyond what's demanded of us. And I think if we start contributing in a way, it's sort of like starting to pay down the principal, it's a, it's a big step. And then, we have, we sort of set a trend for improving that contribution every year.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you also, city manager and the staff and all of our staff for the hard work that they put in, especially hard work considering that for some people, this means elimination of their job. I would like to echo a few things that have been said. I do agree that we should put something back into the reserves and, as Alderman Tendem said, at the end of the year, make whatever contribution we can to the fire and police pension funds. The things that I would really, I'm reluctant to see any cut in are obviously the, the Ecology Center, Fleetwood Jordan Center issues, the Levy Center, and Robert Crown. As someone who's supported vehemently the Dutch Elm Injection Program, I would be very reluctant to see us even reduce it by one year because the, then the cost of removing elms sometimes wipes out the, the benefit that we've gained. So, I would agree with delaying tree planting for a year. And perhaps then, we can let the trees that we buy from the tree consortium grow and have a better chance. And also, I would support delaying the tree maintenance, the Parkway Tree Maintenance by a year. I don't want to return to the thirty-year cycle that we had, that we had to fix in a really dramatic fashion. It wasn't really a tree trimming cycle. And, but those are the things. I also want to say that I, I do want to maintain our branch libraries. I really appreciate all of the efforts that people have come forward with. I want to give the community a year to come up with solutions. I think there are many excellent ideas that are bubbling through the community that are, have the potential for realization. And I think that there's no question in my mind that if we use all of these resources that have been motivated, that we can keep our branch libraries open for the long haul. So, I, I would say that I think that we should look to give these supporters the year that they are asking us, because I think we would be cutting off our nose to spite our face if we, if we didn't give them that opportunity. We're, we're asking for volunteers. We're asking for people to come forward to help our, our city. And here is a perfect example of people who are motivated to do that.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, city manager. I think this has been a fabulous process so far. And I continue to be just amazed and proud of the responsiveness of the community and coming up with so much energy and positive, positive comments about what they can do to help us through this budget crisis. I think Alderman Nguyen said almost everything that I would have said. I do want to put money toward the reserves. I think it's very important, extremely important for this council. We all came on and went through a campaign, understanding that both economic development and the budget were our two most important issues facing us. And I know that we're all acutely aware of that. There are a couple of things that I'd, I'd like to say specifically about the libraries. I am very interested in the concept of an SSA as opposed to a library district. So, I'd like a little bit more discussion about that. I'm sure we'll have it in the future. The reason why I'm taking that position at this point is that creating an SSA does give some economic development stimulus to the surrounding business districts. And if we're going to look at the, at the branch libraries and make the argument that they do stimulate people coming and shopping in those areas, then I would like the rest of the area, the small businesses surrounding them, to also benefit from that. Just some very small questions here. I want to know a little bit more about the liability issues with regard to pooch park and the dog beach in terms of using volunteers. I know we have very important safety concerns and rules in place about who may attend and the care that they have to give to their animals and the safety issues posed there. So, I want to make sure that that's addressed. I also, yeah, share the concerns of, that others have expressed to retain the library bus service at Levy, retain the fabulous program at Fleetwood Jordan. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When we began the discussion of the branch libraries, I think we were talking about more generally restoring funding for branch libraries. We're in a different place now. And I'm heartened to, to know that our library board is not only supporting branch library services in Evanston, broadening and expanding those services, but almost more importantly to me is that the board created a task force on sustainable funding. So, now we have a form and structure for how we can come up with some alternative funding for branch libraries. And if the council decides to approve in this current budget, the addition of a development officer and an intergovernmental affairs person working for the city and working for all its departments to find money from other sources than our general revenue fund, I think that will benefit as well our libraries. So, I'd like for us to see if we can, Mr. Bobkowitz, come up with a plan, so to speak, as to how a development officer, intergovernmental affairs person could help us with the long-term sustainable funding for branch libraries and not just for this next year, but obviously beyond. I think we're just needing something more of a business plan at this point for the branch libraries. And I, I think your office can have something to do with putting that together. And as to the, the dog beach, pooch park, it always amused me that it costs more for my dog to go to the beach than it does for me in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
You know, to, to be able to pay our way for these services that a number of us are talking about providing and, and the additional funds, we want to put in the reserves. talking about providing and, and the additional funds we want to put in the reserves. I think we need to begin to talk about how much money or what percentage of taxes we would need to levy in order to make up the revenue because we've got to be realistic. We started out talking about a nine-plus million dollar deficit. We are trying to be proactive in raising money to put in the reserve. You know, where would the money come from? So if, while you, you guys could give us an overview of what would be the percentage of our taxes that would, we need to levy if we were to raise per million? And maybe begin to get some scenarios in terms of tax bills, 6,000, 10,000, 15,000? What would it be, what would be the cost to the taxpayers of Evanston? Because to everything we do, all the services we want, and of course, we want all of the services and we want everybody to be served, but how do we pay for it? So if you could, you know, give us some alternatives, we'd appreciate that.
Alderman John-Baptiste, members of the council. Alderman, are you looking for what the tax increase would need to be to cover the entire nine and a half million dollars?
Just give us some scenarios. You know, I don't think it's the entire nine and a half million, but you know, if we want to raise two millions, three, four, okay? One more thing, could you further explain the ECMC wants to, at least the director says he wants to concede a hundred million, a hundred thousand dollars and talked about possibly accepting a transfer of the facilities to a municipal home? Have there been further discussions with our, you know, facilities manager to talk about how we might be able to accommodate them? How realistic is that? And I do know that the lease is coming up in 2010, this year, right? And so how long would it take to relocate ECMC and what would be the cost of that?
Alderman John-Baptiste, members of the council, that is one of the outstanding items for, from a detailed perspective which we need to get, but I can give you sort of a general overview of the work we've done in the last two weeks. We have looked at two city-owned facilities that might make sense for them. One is this building and the other is the main library. We believe we have the space in both facilities. The challenge here is the electrical system of the building, so we are working out what costs might need to be made to increase our electrical capabilities here in this building. We don't believe that's an issue at the library. We have talked with Comcast about the costs associated with providing the link that they would need. They have something which they call master control, which is a series of computer devices which actually run the playback of the various channels. Those need to be connected to the cable system. There is at least some network connectivity here at this building to do that. In talking with representatives from Comcast, they are engineering a solution that would use what is existing here or would use their newer fiber backbone that they have. So we're getting costs from Comcast, which we've not yet gotten. We've also had discussions with Evanston Township High School. They currently have their own master control. They currently playback on the cable system from the high school. They have studio space there. So ECMC is in discussions with ETHS about the possibility of co-locating with their television production. I believe they do two classes a day at the high school. ECMC has nicer equipment than the high school does, so I think there's certainly interest. Dr. Witherspoon, Mr. Stafford, their finance director, and I met with Steve on Monday of this week, so those discussions are continuing. We don't have a, a, a specific cost from a move. I think there are various flavors of how you move, the, the level. We could certainly go there with trucks and, and do it ourselves or you hire a, a firm that specializes in television equipment, so we're looking at those costs still.
How long would that take? Assuming that there's an agreement with ETHS, can we execute on that within the time that we have? Because the lease, I would suppose that the lessor would want some kind of agreement as whether or not it would be year-to-year, another two or three-year lease.
And I, and I believe, and Mr. Bartlebaugh is nodding his head, that those discussions are continuing between ECMC and, and the school district. I think one of the things we've discovered in our due diligence at the council's request, again, ECMC is not the city. They are a separate nonprofit organization. They have some additional wherewithal that we, certainly I was not aware of. And I think the question for the council is how do your cuts vis-à-vis their existing financial position? What are we responsible for covering? What are we just simply going to tell them this is their new financing from the city and they're responsible with their own resources to make those changes? So that's, I think, an outstanding issue that the city council would need to discuss.
And I guess you'll get back to us with the tax levy scenarios?
Yes, I think we, we can come out on a, on a per-million scenario if the council wished to raise the property tax levy in order to generate. And if I may say, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you're kind of coalescing down to the issues that you feel are important, I think at some point, either today or at your next meeting, but perhaps today, some straw votes might be helpful to get some direction from the council on issues. I mean, there's probably a half a dozen major issues that have arisen during these discussions. You know, I believe that as long as you're not looking to restore all of the nine and a half million dollars, but if there are a couple of key pieces that you're looking to restore, I would like the opportunity to present scenarios to do that that may not include property tax increases. So I'll leave it to the council's best judgment as to how you'd like to proceed, but I think there are other solutions.
Well, one solution I'm remiss in not having done this sooner is we're going to take a five-minute break.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, and all the odd things that your places are, things I brought back instead of money from Washington from my trip.
Yeah. Really appreciate that. We sent you to get money and they gave you those.
Thank you very much. Alderman Holmes, I believe you were next.
Um.
Oh, and I should, I am remiss, I should have said Alderman Rainey is, I believe, out of the country. Otherwise, she would be here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Manager, could you address, or maybe the chief could address, the whole issue around fire safety? Alderman Burris brought up the issue in terms of with the proposed reduction in the fire department of the safety issue. And I think that we would certainly not want our constituents to feel that they were unsafe. So could we, could that be addressed?
Certainly. I'll ask Chief Rakowski to come up while he is. As we prepared the budget, as I think all of you know, we wanted to make sure that we looked at the community standards of all the municipal services we provide and given the large amount that we were looking to cut, to see that those reductions were something that we could do citywide. And what we do as a city, it's difficult to compare apples to oranges. You know, how do you compare the work that a firefighter does to the importance of having a branch library, to the importance of keeping your streets well-maintained, to the importance of maintaining your parks and your trees? And so we've tried to have a balance and I went to each of the department directors when we came up with these reductions and I asked them to look at them as responsibly as they could as municipal professionals in their areas, but also recognizing that we do have a nine and a half million dollar deficit. So I had gone to Chief Rakowski and asked him to, to look very carefully at the fire department's budget because certainly our first priority is making sure that the residents of Evanston are safe. But with that, I asked him, are there ways that we could make adjustments to the budget that would continue to keep the residents of Evanston safe, but also make some adjustments? And no department head, and Chief Rakowski, Chief Eddington, none of the department heads wanted to make any reductions because their job is to provide the best municipal services possible. But they all came forward and they all suggested reductions in their best professional judgment that, reductions that could be taken. And I commend Chief Rakowski and all of the department heads for doing that because, but honestly, their first response to Alderman Holmes is, no, we can't make any cuts. And, and in some respects, that's our right response, but we have a responsibility to you and the community to balance the budget. And so with that sort of opening preamble, I'll let Chief Rakowski speak specifically to those proposed reductions in the fire department.
Thank you, City Manager. And, and I do understand and recognize the budget issues we are facing and it is a very difficult time. However, in, in the fire service, anytime we have to make a cut of any significance, it has to come from the personnel costs. That's our largest cost in the department, 90 to 92% of our costs. Anytime we affect our personnel costs, there has to be an impact to the service. There's no other way of doing it. It really comes down to response time and having enough resources to get the job done. Our station configurations, the number of companies, and our personnel allow us to provide an average response time of about four minutes to every part of Evanston. I believe the men and women of the Evanston Fire Department do an amazing job, given our call volume and number of personnel. And it, so what is being proposed is this. We have a daily staffing level of 26 firefighter paramedics every day. That provides us five engines, two trucks, and two ambulances and a shift chief. When that level falls below 26, we have an overtime account that allows us to ask a firefighter from another shift to not only work 24, but work a 48-hour shift and to provide coverage so we can maintain the five engines, two aerial trucks, two ambulances, and a shift chief on a daily basis. If we eliminate that overtime, we can no longer provide five engines, two trucks, two ambulances, and a shift chief. A vehicle would have to be placed out of service. If we place a vehicle out of service through this overtime reduction, it will have an impact. And as the fire chief, I, I just want to make sure we understand those impacts as we make these decisions. Closing a company, first of all, will have a domino effect on response time. If you close, if you shut down an engine or truck because we go below that 26, we can't put three people on an engine or truck, we have to shut down a company. You remove your first level of response to that area. Therefore, the next company dispatch is actually your second level of response that could potentially add two to four minutes to a response time. Our average response time last year was three minutes and 28 seconds in 2009, something we're really proud of. The other impact it has is it reduces the number of firefighters available at the scene of an emergency. I think we all, many of you may have remembered the discussions we had on the high-rise situation. We can provide at most 26 firefighters today at the scene of an emergency. In, in some cases, that may seem like a lot of personnel, but in reality, when you have a fire, a collapse, a, even a car extrication where there's a, a life at risk, you need to assign many, many tasks to mitigate that emergency. And 26 firefighters just barely cover the initial response and the initial task assignments. There's some discussion on mutual aid. Mutual aid is available, but mutual aid is, is, doesn't really, it takes an average of seven to nine minutes at the soonest or the quickest to get a mutual aid company into Evanston because they got to go through their jurisdiction to our jurisdiction to get here. Actually, about a year ago today, we had a fire over at 612 Sheridan Road where we needed mutual aid. Mutual aid was not available. We waited 30 minutes for the first company to arrive. In the meantime, the firefighters went through three air bottles, that's the air they carry on their back, before we were able to relieve them and get some support. The other problem we have with mutual aid is that a lot of the mutual aid trucks have a lot of trouble getting into Evanston. They can't get under our bioducts, so it takes a little longer for them to get here. What I, what probably makes me nervous on a daily basis is probably twice a day, we utilize all our resources. Our call volume, particularly between seven and nine and four to six, when people are moving around the most, increases significantly where we are actually tapped out and many times bringing mutual aid resources in to help us cover those call volumes. The, when you look at our numbers, our 85, I think last year, we were a little over 8,500 calls for service. It's, it's important that we do everyone right. Everyone's potential litigation, we got to make sure we do it right and we have the resources to do it. And then finally, you know, we, we're looking at this, but there's also some concern over our ISO, if we make any changes to our personnel or our vehicles, if we can still cover the requirements under the insurance service organization which treats us as a fire department. Like I said, I understand this is a tough budget year, it's a tough budget, but as the fire chief, I think it's important that I share with you my concerns.
Thank you. I have four more Aldermen who want to speak, but I want to ask you, before you ask your questions, if it would be helpful if we put the one and a half million in potential cuts up on the screen and kind of went through them and saw, found out if we could get any consensus around any of them. Alderman, Alderman Burris?
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Okay, then let's go through Alderman Tendem?
My question's not relevant at this time.
Okay. Alderman, Wynn, I had you next. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief Rakowski. Have we compared the costs of the additional overtime that we use for 66% of the year, most of the time of the year, to the cost of adding a 27th person to our, our daily staffing level who could serve, like in the schools, as a roving sub, a building sub, who could help us? What are the costs? How does that compare by adding a 27th firefighter paramedic compared to paying overtime for most of the, that additional overtime?
I, I believe I can provide you that comparison report on whether it's more cost-effective to add personnel versus our overtime, but actually, I think it was two years ago, maybe three years ago, we, we actually started to add personnel for that reason and of course, to also staff that third ambulance. So I believe I do have that information that I could provide to you. But in, in the 66% you're referring to is probably the number of times that, again, through overtime reduction, a vehicle would be placed out of service. Two-thirds of the year, we would have one less vehicle to respond.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
What, and I, I know that you won't have this answer off the top of your head, but actually Joellen might be able to help with this. What effect would this reduction in staffing have on workers' comp claims? There's probably data out there of if you have a reduction of a certain number, you obviously you have your, your firefighters doing more work. You talked about going through three tanks of air. That's clearly putting a huge pressure on their bodies in a way that we're more like opening ourselves up to workmen's comp. And as many of us know, that's, it's a large line item or a, a part of our budget. So sort of the comparison of this reduction versus how much are we opening ourselves up to liability?
We, we take safety very seriously and, and that's always a concern. Again, when you have only 26 firefighters on the scene of an emergency, particularly a, a structured fire, and going down to 23 potentially, has a significant impact on those areas that we have to really pay, pay very, very close attention to.
Alderman will come back with that information. Alderman will come back with that information.
Thank you. I think that's all the questions that we had for you. Do you all want to try to reach some consensus? If, if we're going to reject some of the cuts that are in the proposed budget, then we're going to have to accept some of the cuts in the million and a half. So rather than make it too easy for us by saying what we don't want to cut first, I think it might be helpful to look at the million and a half. Alderman, Jean Baptiste, did you?
Yes. Madam Tisza, what I would suggest is that we don't see the suggestions that we may make now as hard and fast, but to, as instructions to Wally, to look at different scenarios. If we take A, B, C, D out, you know, what, where would we look for revenue, how much revenue, you know, et cetera, et cetera, as opposed to perceiving ourselves right now as making hard and fast decisions? Because ultimately, we have to figure out how we pay for any of the decisions we make.
I agree, these aren't hard and fast, but if there are things such as the Ecology Center in the list that aren't acceptable to us, then I think it would help Wally to, I don't mean to speak for you, Wally, but I think it would be helpful to Wally to know that there are some things we won't agree with.
Yeah, but, excuse me, I agree with that, except acceptability will also be tied to how we pay for these things. So if, there may be a number of things that we want to take off the list, and then when Wally comes back to us with how we pay for them, you know, we may have to reconsider that. And so I'm saying that, you know, with that approach, we can be a little more flexible as opposed to any hard and fast decisions right now.
Yeah, I agree, these would only be straw votes. Alderman Winn?
I'm sorry, Wally was gonna say something.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll let you actually speak for yourself, what a novel.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you know, obviously, the council's willingness to say above and beyond what we need to do to balance the budget, we want to do more, is something you don't hear councils, not only in Illinois, saying, but anywhere saying. It would be helpful to me, I think, to get a sense of what the order of magnitude you'd like it to be. I've heard two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, five-hundred thousand dollars. It'd be useful to get that order of magnitude, and it would be get, be useful to know what should just be removed from consideration. And I would be happy to come back with a scenario that says, this is what that package would be if it's a quarter million, half a million, from this list, with things that you feel that shouldn't be considered removed, so that you could then address, I think, back to Alderman Jean Baptiste's point, to then just really focus on the, what may be the real piece of this. The, you know, a million and a half's a lot of money, but it would be helpful, again, to know the scope of it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, half a million, which is the numbers I've heard you say, and then what things should come off, and then maybe we could put this aside for today and come back at your next meeting and talk further about it.
Alderman Winn?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to clarify, my understanding is that right now, we have the, the budget is balanced, just so that we all are on this, starting at the same point, the budget is balanced with no property tax increase. There are obviously some things in it that some of us have concerns about. The one-point-five-million-dollar list that you presented to us were the things that we could substitute in and still maintain the no-property tax increase, right?
If the council chose to take from that list, absolutely. So if you are, if you're saying, again, if you say this is what you think the reduction you'd be comfortable with to support for the additional money beyond the nine and a half, that's instructive in one way. Taking things off is also instructive, because it helps us get to whatever that number is, but it also knows that that's not a, an ability to substitute in to the nine and a half million.
Understood. So, I mean, I, so if we take something out from the nine and a half million budgeted, the balanced budget, then we have to look for something else in, in, among this list that you're presenting to us, or something else that we all find, which is not likely.
That is correct.
Well, I'd like to first propose that we take, we remove the Ecology Center from the potential cut list.
Keep it below the line?
Or any line, I think, is what you're saying.
Right, I just want to take it, take it away from a, being removed, because that's among the choices that we have as a substitute in, and I, I think that, that we should not have it as a potential substitute in. There, there are other things.
Does anyone else want to please speak to that issue, so we might have some direction for the city manager?
I would second that.
I agree with that.
Alderman Fisk?
Do we have this on a page, on a printed page?
It is, it is part of the proposed budget. It is on page seventeen. And so we are projecting page seventeen of the proposed, so if you have your budget in a paper form, it is page seventeen.
In a totally informal...
If not, I will hand you down my budget, and you can go to page seventeen.
Alderman Wilson?
I agree with that. I have a couple of other items as well, if, but if we want to pull on that particular item.
We are gonna have to get to the hard point of items we're actually cutting, too.
No, I, I only have a couple.
Alderman Grover? I have, I'm sorry, Alderman Winn, I have Alderman Grover next.
Alderman Winn said what I was going to say, thank you.
Excellent. I'm sorry, Alderman, when did I cut you off?
You did, but you've said, the points got...
Politely.
Okay. Can we vote on that? Do you want a straw vote on that?
I would like a straw vote on it, and Alderman Fisk, I haven't heard from you yet.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that, you know, a vote for or against something right now is, is taken within the context of the entire budget. And, I mean, I'd like some more information, obviously, on what we were talking about earlier, about what the offsets for these might be. Obviously, I'd like to see the Ecology Center remain, but I also want to find out what the ultimate cost of that was going to be. So that's not necessarily reflected in my vote. I just don't want any, anyone to, you know, jump to conclusions about, you know, what a straw vote actually means, because we'll hear, we'll hear about it.
I would let all the Ecology Center supporters know that it ain't over till it's over.
But, but, Madam Mayor, members of the council, again, this is, the Ecology Center, with the exception of a few thousand dollars, is fully funded in the proposed budget. This is two-hundred thousand dollars in addition. If you take that off the list, then the Ecology Center operates pretty much as it has operated in the past.
Right, thank you.
I believe we had a majority for taking it off the list.
All right.
So it's off the list. That's taking the two-hundred thousand off the list.
The two-hundred thousand.
So there would be no additional, we have, there, at this point, then, the Ecology Center would continue to operate pretty much as is.
Right, yes.
Alderman Winn?
Well, I, I'll just continue with the things that I think we heard some discussion about. I, I think that the Fleetwood Jordaine Center proposed, I'm squinting here, sorry, a hundred thousand dollars, should be, should be removed from the potential one-point-five-million available to us.
I'd second that. Does anyone else have an opinion you'd like to register? Alderman Wilson? I meant to put you on the spot, you were looking at...
No, no, I've got my notes here. My objection primarily, and I realize that elimination of the clerk will result in delays, but that seems that that's going to be more administrative, but I do feel strongly about not eliminating the, the program manager position.
Alderman Holmes, you're in favor of this. Does anyone else want to register a vote on Fleetwood? Alderman Tendem?
Yes, I mean, so it sounds like...
I'm not sure what you're doing.
Well, my, my, my motion was, or my point of discussion was, that the entire hundred thousand dollars be, be removed as a target, okay?
There you go.
Okay, I'm gonna call it the target list.
Alderman Jean Baptiste, I'm just trying to count votes, you know me, I'm always...
I'm just trying to understand what we're doing.
I'm just always trying to count votes.
Okay.
Alderman Burris?
I was actually just gonna echo what Alderman Wilson said, that the clerk position, I think, could be, you know, we could find other ways to administer that, those duties, but the theater manager, I agree, needs to stay.
Alderman Fisk?
I agree, I think that we can probably find a volunteer for the part-time clerk, but I'd like to retain the theater program manager.
Okay, city manager, did that give you enough to go on?
Well, I think I've heard two things. I've heard, take the whole hundred thousand dollars off, and I've heard, take just the program manager, which is seventy-six thousand dollars off.
Well, since this is a straw vote, can we just go now and, and then come back and let Wally do the hard work?
I, I, thank you, okay. I, I, I get, I think where you're headed.
Okay.
Excellent. Alderman Winn, did you have any more to suggest?
No, I just wanted us to vote.
That was...
Line of wonders.
Your list. Alderman Wilson?
I would also not, I would, I don't want to eliminate the Levy Senior Bus Program. I'm okay with the rest of the Levy Center suggestions, but the bus program seems that, that there is not a reasonably suitable alternative to that, and I would like to keep that in.
Alderman Grover agrees. Alderman Winn?
Well, I have concerns about eliminating the full-time program manager.
We have two.
Well, okay.
It's a straw vote.
Right. All right, does anyone object to that? Try it that way. All right, do we have cuts that we do want to vote for in a straw poll?
I had one more, I had one more that I'd like to remove from the target list.
And then we're gonna assume that the others are, have some level of acceptability?
No.
No, okay. Guys, you gotta work with me here.
Okay, I, I agree with the suggestion Alderman Wilson made about the facilities management cut, because this is someone who maintains our equipment, and I think part of what we need to do is make things last longer, we do make things, just for everyone's benefit, we make things last longer than most other communities ever think about doing. But I think that if we can continue to do that...
What page are you on?
I'm on page eight of eighty.
Page what?
Eight of eighty. It's under Facilities Management Division.
And, could I add to that?
Yes, Alderman Wilson has an addition, and then, then I...
Just, it's only a comment.
We need to know what your, what the rest of the council's reaction is. Alderman?
Just noticing, we presently have a two-month backlog on the work requests, so eliminating another one of those positions, and this is a team of people who are processing over three thousand work orders and preventative maintenance tickets, and the assessment is that there are gonna be two-hundred-and-sixty-three of those that aren't gonna be completed annually. So that's, that's a, that's a big, big impact from the maintenance perspective, and one of the problems that the city continues to have is with maintaining what we have. So I don't feel comfortable eliminating that position.
Thank you. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
I agree with you.
I agree.
Then I believe we have agreement on that.
Yeah.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
I am not in favor of eliminating the, was it a hundred thousand dollars from the police department? In terms of its, I think it's the remainder of the summer plan? I thought it was seventy thousand, but I looked at the budget, it was a hundred thousand. The budget, the budget is...
Do you have a page number?
Is a hundred thousand, but on page four is seventy thousand, isn't it?
Alderman Jean Baptiste, is your mic on?
It is, I'm talking too far from it.
Thank you.
What is the hundred thousand?
Page four of the...
Page four, seventy thousand. I'm not for eliminating the seventy thousand dollars for the summer plan. Can I get a second?
How does everyone else feel about the summer plan funding seventy thousand dollar cut?
Could we have more information about it? I'm not sure I understand exactly what it is and how many staff that entails.
Chief is here. Madam Mayor, members of the council, while Chief Eddington comes in, this is something that the council annually appropriates, it's almost entirely overtime, to deal with hotspots that occur over the summer. Chief Eddington, I'll let you fill in the details.
Good morning, Mrs. Mayor, City Manager. The below-the-line cuts, if you will, of the remainder of the summer plan is seventy thousand dollars. There's approximately thirty thousand dollars also identified that's related to the Fourth of July celebrations. Above the line was the first half of the summer plan of seventy thousand dollars, and the quick formula I ran through the last time we got together and chatted was approximately, police overtime costs approximately fifty dollars an hour, so we're looking at a combined total of a loss of about twenty-eight hundred hour, twenty-eight hundred hours of targeted police overtime for that summer plan, where as part of our deployment strategy, we move people to hotspots based on the information that we have. We would reduce by those hours, we would still use a deployment strategy, but we'll have less resources to apply to those areas of concern.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Yeah, some wards don't have hotspots in the summer, some others do. And so, so, Alderman Grover? Yeah, so what happens in the second, in the fifth, in the eighth, and the ninth ward is that there's increased activity on the part of, well, there's increased instability, so to speak. Some is criminal activities. And so we need the presence of the police, there's more community policing going on, and so the elimination of the summer plan altogether will continue to provide the same kind of services that we get in the winter, and that would not meet the, the kind of burden that the police faces, because you will still have to respond in some way, shape, or form. So we may end up spending the same amount of money, except it's unplanned, because there's a lot of activities that the police has to respond to, okay? So the seventy thousand dollars, I think, should be taken off the table.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, in our discussions, Chief Eddington and I, in making the split, we did it very consciously, that we feel that a portion of it can go away. If there are unusual occurrences above and beyond, certainly, the police department will be given the resources, they need to do that, but we felt that at least a portion was appropriate, but perhaps not the whole thing, and that's why you see this second piece. So we would have no qualms with the council taking this off the table. But we believe the other cut that's contained in the nine and a half million is one that we can manage with.
Alderman Fisk, I had you down next. Alderman Burris?
I actually recommend keeping the, I mean, cutting it, the extra overtime support for the Fourth of July celebration of the thirty thousand. I think that we can ask the organizations that are walking in that parade to devote time for after the parade to help clean that up. I think that helps in community spirit and teaching responsibility that for a lot of these younger folks that they need to help the city. I also believe the same thing with the Robert Crown Center Recreation Aid. Why aren't we having our, our hockey teams that are using it, and the ice dancing teams, and the skating club have a responsibility for cleaning up the locker rooms and cleaning up the, you know, the bathrooms, just, just helping it stay nicer? Once again, I, I think we've gotten away from teaching our kids that they have a responsibility to keep their city clean and safe, and to report incidents and pick up trash when, when it's fallen on the ground. Instead, they see, they see it as somebody else is going to come and do that for them, and that's where we're paying a lot of money for custodial staff and our high-paid employees to pick up after a parade. We have a lot of organizations out here who are, want to volunteer, let's put them to work.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
I agree with Colleen about the, the parade aftermath. I, I don't have a problem of cutting, or keeping that on the cut list. I think that we have the volunteer police groups, we have the, certainly the, the materials to distribute to have people be more responsible. I think if we take this seriously and plan ahead and post notices that people do take care of their, their trash and their lawn chairs or whatever, I think that we can manage and prove what a, you know, responsible community we are. So I agree, keeping the thirty thousand on the cut list is a good idea.
Thank you, I think I just blew a light. I think it was Alderman Winn, but it might have been Wilson.
It was, I just wanted, I'd like to sort of complete the summer plan, seventy thousand dollars, and remove that from the target list. Do we have...
Does anyone disagree with that?
Then I have a question about the overtime for the Fourth of July, it's overtime for police presence. I'm sure the police are not picking up the trash. I think the police are probably, the folks who are, I mean, where I see them, because I live about three blocks from the fireworks, is managing, managing the, all of the crowds.
Madam Mayor, Alderman Wynn, we spent about 80,000 on overtime on the Fourth of July citywide, and it's spread between Parks, Recreation, Forestry, and they all are, Public Works and Police. We've talked about this internally, if you wouldn't be surprised, so.
I'm willing to let volunteers pick up the trash, I'm not willing to let volunteers manage the crazy traffic that's over on the lakefront where people decide they've seen the fireworks and they need to be home five minutes later.
It's in two different spots.
Okay, I'm looking at one memo, so I don't know where you're looking at.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you would like, maybe we can come back with a more tightly crafted document that specifically talks about the Fourth of July. I think we agree with you that there are apples and oranges here regarding the police work versus the work of our public work staff, which may be delayed and be some cost savings, there might be opportunities for volunteers. So if you'd like to take the 70,000 for the summer plan off the table, we'll then come back and have a document at your next meeting to talk more about the remaining of the Fourth of July.
That's, I just wanted more information about what, what reducing the overtime for police presence is. Then that's fine, I can wait.
I have a question, too. If the Fourth of July this year falls on a Sunday, is Monday a holiday, or is Monday a working day? And will the cleanup that would be not overtime on Sunday, the Fourth, be delayed until Tuesday, the Sixth, or?
Yes, and this year with Fourth of July falling on a Sunday makes it an extra expensive Fourth of July, and Mr. Gainer has worked out all those numbers, and I bet you can recite many of them off the top of his head.
It will be a triple-type day if we were to do the typical public works, work of fires, cleanup, emptying the trash cans, bringing the street sweepers in. Our choice would be, if these budget cuts go through, that this will all occur in a regular shift, and it will just stay. Sunday is the celebration this year, we'd come in and clean up on Monday, it would be regular shift. So whatever volunteers did or didn't do.
Monday's the holiday.
Monday's the holiday.
Monday's the holiday.
Monday's the holiday, Tuesday.
That's why the Sunday's the triple.
Yeah, that's why.
So it would be Tuesday.
Regular shift is when we'd come back in.
But we could also look at options where Monday's overtime is cheaper than Sunday's overtime. So we, let us, let us sort through, again, that's why I don't believe we're prepared, especially given the interest the council's expressing with using volunteers and community organizations, rather than deal with this on the fly, well, let's come back.
Alderman Fisk?
Sorry, thanks, Madam Mayor. Mr. Gainer, I had a question for you. On the Robert Crown Center, the 50,000, are we, how are, how is that being divided between the office clerk and the recreation aid?
Well, the, the recreation aid is the one that does the work in the office, and it's a permanent, it's a part-time job, and it's the one that does.
I mean, the office clerk.
Are you talking your office clerk?
Yeah, I'm talking, how much of, how much of the 50,000 is dedicated to the office clerk, and how much of the 50,000 is dedicated to the recreation aid, if we were to divide those? I have a, I have a strong feeling that in, in facilities that, that provide revenue to the city, and that where we serve the public, we should keep them as clean as possible. And I've been very, very proud of, actually, thank you, City Manager, for the, the way that the Civic Center is maintained. It's always very, very clean and nice to come into, and I think we need to keep our facilities in the same way.
The answer to that is it's 50 percent. So it's a split half.
Okay, so I, on that, I would support keeping the recreation aid that provides additional custodial service, and cutting the office clerk.
Sorry, what page are you on, Alderman?
I'm on page eight of eighty.
Okay, did I, is there agreement on that?
I would agree with that.
Alderman Tendem and Holmes and.
Could we explain what the, the poll is?
Alderman Fisk, would you make?
I'm sorry, what?
To clarify what we are being asked.
Oh, okay, I was, I was proposing that we retain the Robert Crown Center Recreation Aid, who provides custodial service at the center, and that we cut the Robert Crown Center office clerk. Again, that's a part-time position, hopefully we can pick up a volunteer parent to help out with that.
I think, I think there's not a majority that has made up their mind on that issue. It's not that they disagree. Alderman Wilson?
The Crown Center does already utilize a lot of volunteer or pseudo-volunteer types of, types of arrangements, particularly with regard to check-in and checking in skaters in the early hours before the office is open, but I'm okay with the entire cut as it is. I don't like it, but I can live with it, and we, we need to really start digging into the cuts and lessen the taking outs, I think.
Alderman Burris?
Agree with Alderman Wilson.
Okay, so that cut remains. Do we have, we're on a roll, guys. Do we have any more particularly cuts that we support?
Well, that, that's one we've decided to support.
Yeah, that's one we do support, I know. We need a few others, though. Alderman Wilson?
I can live with the rest of the ones on the list that we haven't talked about. I don't like them, but I can live with them.
All right, that's, is anyone else prepared to go that far?
I am.
Alderman Holmes?
I am.
Alderman Wynn? Alderman Fisk? Alderman Burris?
To accept the other things that are on the list to remain.
Alderman Shaw-Baptiste, all right. You have your answer, City Manager.
Great, thank you.
That was awesome, guys. Alderman Wynn?
I would like to direct the City Manager to come back to us with ways to maintain the branch libraries and come up with a plan for giving the supporters one year to, to work with our development officer and the library board, and figure out what, what are the minimum, if there are any other reductions we know. I know we've made recent reductions in hours, but what can we do so, to get through this next year? And, you know, one of the things I did notice, I wrote down among the comments that were made, it seems as though there might be some state money that we're not getting back, that Will Met and Skokie are managing to attract, and I'd like to still look into that as well.
Could I ask one clarification? Does that motion include having them look at converting the library to a, a library board that had taxing authority?
No, I, I actually don't think that that's a, a good idea, because I think that, first of all, if we did that, the only way I would support that is if the library district then takes the remaining debt for the main library building, which I think still has.
I don't have that.
It has, it has a fair amount to go on the, on debt payment, and I don't think that that would, that very many library districts would do that. So, and I do see it as, it doesn't keep the amount that people are taxed down. I think that we can work on other solutions without creating a library district, and if it, if things change, we can look at that, but I'm not in support of that. I also am not necessarily in support of the SSAs. I think that's unfair to various districts within the community, and it has a tendency to make it sound as though you can buy your way into a library, and I don't want to, I don't want to have that. I think that we can come up with ways to maintain the branches without going in either of those directions.
Alderman Burris?
I would, in some ways, support Alderman Wynn of giving the reprieve for a year, with the caveat that we're willing to eliminate things for a year, such as the tree inoculation, such as planting the new, the new trees, such as the, some of the, the maintenance for the trees. Once again, love trees, I'm very green, but if we're, if we're trying to get to a point where the branch libraries are so important, and we're one to give these folks a year to get their fundraising, get their funding in order, we need to make some hard choices here. So that's kind of my balancing act on this.
Alderman Tendem?
Yeah, I think it's, that's a very painful choice, but I would agree with Alderman Burris. That seems like a possible working solution for me, that would work, I would agree with. And at this time, we're asking the manager to look into specifics, because I don't know if it's been formally asked, but to look into the, the retaining of the staffing at the fire department, finding some internal cuts there or something else that we can do to maintain staffing as it is.
Can it be a separate motion?
Yeah, let's deal with the libraries at one point, and then we'll get, we'll come back to you, Alderman Tendem. Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
Well, I would offer an amendment, and that is that the City Manager looks into the delivery of library services in the city, and to think about the west side of town, and, you know, consider whether it's cuts at the, at the staffing cuts at the branches, calls for volunteers, and the various scenarios that people have put forth, but also to look at how do we effectively deliver such service at, on the west side of town. So I'm not sold on, I mean, I'm sold on saving all the branches and saving all of our services, but I think as we try to consider how to pay for these things, we need to take everything into consideration and think about equity.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I would like to take the SSA off the table, if we could. It's, it's, everything I've heard, there doesn't seem to be any, you know, real significant support for that, so perhaps I don't want the city staff wasting their time and energy investigating and looking at that. So if there's a consensus on taking that component off as an option, I would support that. I would go along with Alderman Shaw-Baptiste's suggestion, and if somehow we do manage to find funding to preserve it for the year, I would want that condition to qualify with the directive that during that year, a funded plan be developed that serves the entire community, not a funded plan for these two branches, but a funded plan that serves the entire city of Evanston. And I would insist, from my perspective, that that be a condition of that.
Thank you for framing.
I think that's getting a unit, Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, that's something that I, I could support, and it, just as long as we're taking a long view toward the libraries, I, I just don't want this to be an issue that's coming back. I have to say that I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, the suggestions that, you know, we can run out and start raising money, and having been involved in a lot of grassroots issues for many, many years, I know that initially there's a lot of support for that. It can last for a few years, and then it can peter out over, you know, the subsequent years. I want the branch libraries and our library system to remain strong and to, and to be a permanent part of Evanston, so I would look at a, at a long-term solution, and I think that might be it, but it certainly gives you a challenge, Mr. City Manager. The other thing that I wanted to say is that in, in terms of the forestry and the, and the tree trimming, I, I can go, as Alderman Wynn said, I can go an extra year without trimming the trees, but I think it's really penny-wise and pound-foolish to take a step back in our inoculation program, because my worry, as you look at, at the success that we've had with that inoculation program, I'm worried that we would be taking a step back, and the cost for a tree removal is just, you know, astounding. So I would, I would encourage everyone to, you know, just think carefully about what trees bring to our community as well.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem? Okay, your light was on hours ago, probably, sorry. Alderman Wilson?
Thanks. I do want to second that. I'm okay if we defer on planting trees for the year, but I, and maybe it's just because I read the Lorax to my son two days ago, but I really don't want to defer on the inoculation program, because I think that's a step back on something we've already made a major investment in.
City Manager, do you have your answer on the libraries?
Yes.
Alderman Tendem, did you want to go back to the police or fire?
Certainly. I would like to request the manager and staff to consider options to the reduction of staff at the, in the firefighters department or group, and to look at some other cost-saving measures there that wouldn't include staff and, and reduce our, you know, manpower and other places in the budget that you might feel we can restore that position, or those positions that have been suggested to, to cut.
Are you talking about the fire department? Right, I mean, okay.
Fire department.
Overtime, there are no positions.
It is overtime. Yeah, overtime, okay.
Do we have?
So if I, if I understand you correctly, you want the City Manager to look for alternative ways to accomplish the objective, as opposed to the cut in?
Correct, yeah, keeping the cut as is, but looking for other more.
Different.
Different, different means of saving the same amount of money, in terms of maybe internal expenses, things that the firefighters would be willing to accept as a, probably temporary cut, but sort of like the inoculation, getting, getting us through this next year and not reducing the overtime hours.
Okay, and we don't have specific suggestions now, but we're saying, take a look to see what alternatives are, because I think that the firefighters have some proposed alternatives.
They do.
So maybe City Manager can consider these things and come back with a response. Okay, great.
Is everybody in agreement on that? Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
Yeah, I would suggest that we take a serious look at the proposed plan from ECMC's director, and come back to us with, you know, your response and an update as to what's going on with negotiations, as opposed to cutting the 200,000.
And Alderman Shaw-Baptiste, members of the council, would you like me to propose additional cuts in the budget for that 100,000?
I'm saying that the director has made a proposal. Please consider that proposal.
Okay.
Because he's already said that ECMC is willing to make the concession of 100,000. And so if you would just take that into consideration and see how that would work to keep ECMC whole and healthy. So I'm not looking for additional cuts.
Well, but in order to do that, you would need 100,000 of additional cuts.
Well, that's true, except because the rent is already 95,000 per year, and so if you would sit down with Mr. Bartobor to think through the proposal, and I'm sure that he's thought through some other ways of making up the 100,000, if, you know, cannot all be done by elimination of, of the rent at this time. So it may be a phased process.
Okay, I fear, though, that it will require additional reductions of the city budget in order to restore that. What I hear him saying is, he can take a 100,000 reduction with adjustments, but cannot take a 200,000 reduction.
Yes, that's, well, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay, so I will then come back to the council with additional reductions in the city budget to cover that 100,000.
That's what I'm talking about.
You want to, well, I have Alderman Holmes next.
Skip me, because I was trying to remember a question that Alderman Wynn.
All right, then Alderman Wilson, you're next.
In looking, in, in looking at the tax return, I think, I think we need more information than what we have to make a commitment to restoring that funding, because I saw, what I saw, it appeared to me that there was 100,000 of money that came in beyond what was necessary to keep it going last year, and that is even with the rent. And it appeared to me from the tax return that there is a substantial amount of cash available, so that's a cut, you know, again, that I feel like I can live with unless I get some information telling me that that circumstances, that those circumstances are very, very different from that. But, you know, to me, that's almost as if they're, you know, if they're, if they're simply relocating to free space, they're really not making any significant cuts at all. They're saving the rent, and, and if they did have that 100,000 operating surplus last year. I'm. year, the $200,000 cut would seem appropriate. I would also like to see a plan devised and presented that gives us a sense that the organization is going to continue to work towards a more independent model, and I think that's what's been expressed to me, that that's a goal, but I want to see that that's going to happen. So, I'm okay with leaving that line item where it is, at least for the time being, and not asking the city manager to dig in further to the, to the other aspects of the budget.
Alderman Burris?
I want to echo what Alderman Wilson said in terms of having more information. The 990 tax form is from 2007, and I know that Mr. Bob Kowits has said, he's asked for the latest, what is the ending fund balance for ECMC, and according to the current one we have from 2007, it was about a little bit over a half a million dollars. So, if that is substantially changed, I think we need to know that if there's been, in the last two years, if there's been a problem, and that's been a huge reduction, then, you know, we can look at, you know, restoring some of that money, but that's a huge fund balance for, not-for-profit, from my experience, and maybe, once again, I'm, something's happened in the last two years that that's very different, but I look forward to getting more information in that regard.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, I agree with Alderman Wilson and Burris on ECMC. I also am encouraged that at least there have been some discussions to cooperate with the high school on this, and looking for new facilities, which I think will definitely be a long-term savings.
Alderman Jean-Baptiste?
Yeah, I think that if the thrust is that we agree with keeping ECMC operational and functional in the city, the city manager can take a closer look at all of those issues that we're talking about, the current budget, fund balance, relocation, cost of relocation, and come back with a proposal that allows this institution to remain whole and healthy. That's what we're talking about.
Seeing no further lights, I would like to ask the city manager about the children's dental clinic, the worst vote, or the vote I regret the most that I voted in six years on the city council, was the health department vote. We thought that family planning was covered, we thought Planned Parenthood was coming to town, they didn't. Then we thought there was a clinic on Howard that would take it over, they didn't, and so I actually voted a vote that ended family planning services in the city of Evanston, and I still deeply regret it, and we haven't been able to fix it, because the Heartland Clinic is thinking of coming to town, but until healthcare is decided at a national level, they cannot make that happen. So, with great faith in you, Wally, but with past experience of being burned, I don't want to simply think that this group is going to get this done. I would like to know before we vote that vote.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'll ask Avonda Thomas, our Director of Health and Human Services, to come in. I hope she's in the next room. With this budget, there's a fairly substantial change in how we provide the services that have been currently provided by our Health and Human Services Department. We are proposing to move, you know, most of the human service roles of the department out of the department and place them elsewhere. Our Parks and Recreation Department will be receiving all of the youth and senior citizen programs that the Health and Human Services Department has. The mayor's summer youth employment program will be going to our Community and Economic Development Department to focus job training. So, with those, with those transfers, it really allows the health department to be a health department, and to allow Avonda and her staff to focus on the wellness of this community. So, one of my charges to Avonda by sort of freeing up her plate and moving some of these services elsewhere, is to really fulfill the commitment that this council made about three years ago to those services that hadn't been provided, and really be a community collaborator with nonprofits, with the hospitals, with other health providers to provide the services that the council was promised staff would follow up to do. So, we're committed to do that. The specific point of the children's dental clinic, I'll let Avonda talk about the contacts that we have, and we'll go from there. Avonda?
Thank you, city manager. We met this week with a foundation that is local, a family foundation here in Evanston, that came to us because they had a concern about the dental services being eliminated. And they met with us, they got our numbers, and they're trying to strategize with their board whether or not they can financially support the dental operations, and we'll know that early next week if they've come to a decision.
Let us know as soon as you know. Thank you.
I sure will.
Alderman Grover, and then if you wanted a presentation on the CIP, we should start it pretty soon. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I have to apologize right now. I need to leave, and I need to be in my car in 20 minutes, so that's my upfront apology. I'd like more information. We do have a memo, this is about the purchase services for human services funding. We have a memo from the Mental Health Board Chair, Marsha Augenbach, and Jonathan Webb, the board staff person, about the impact to those agencies of the proposed budget cuts, and a lot of the agencies gave us an idea of exactly how many Evanston residents will be affected, but I'd like to have real numbers as to how many people we anticipate will be served and how many will not be served if we lose that funding. Included in that would be interesting to know, because the city, as we've learned today, the state is in arrears to the city, to the tune of almost a million, or a little more than a million dollars, and I am certain that Evanston's human services agencies are also owed by the state of Illinois, and it would be, I think, helpful to know exactly what that number is, and how the state is failing Evanston's human service agencies. If we could have that additional information as well, Mr. Bob Kowits, Ms. Thomas, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alderman Wilson?
And my last comment is pretty much along those lines. I am familiar with some of these human service agencies, and I would just like to suggest to my fellow Alderman persons that we consider restoring a portion, and not all of, because there are going to have to be cuts, but a portion of that, of that proposed cut for the human services, because these are, as a lot of people have come to me one-on-one, these are funds that go to organizations that serve the people that have the least ability to voice their needs and concerns, and, you know, I think we should very, should take a very close look at those before making that final decision.
So, at the next budget meeting, I'll come back to us, city manager, with those numbers. Alderman Fisk, and then if we are going to hear the CIP, we have to do it. Alderman Fisk?
Okay, regarding that, city manager, I would just like to know if there's duplication of fund availability to some of the organizations, I mean, whether it's CDPG or, you know, private, private sources, so that we get the full and complete picture of?
The source of funding.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, perhaps instead of starting this presentation now, we could leave it to your next meeting. Your remaining meetings are a little bit up in the air, and would like to try to get a sense from the council what you think the time will require over the next few weeks to do this. Past practice has been that the council finish the budget deliberations in sufficient time for the mayor to exercise her veto over any or part of the budget pursuant to the Evanston Municipal Code, and under normal circumstances, under your normal meeting schedule, that would be to have the budget adopted by your regular meeting on Tuesday, February the 8th. That would then allow two weeks to your second regular meeting on the 22nd for any veto work to be done on the 22nd. My understanding is that's not always how it's played out, but at least that's sort of a way to make that happen. We had scheduled tentatively a budget workshop next Saturday on the 30th of January. We then have the publicly noted public hearing. This council's been very good about getting lots of public comment, but under Illinois state law, you have to have a formal public hearing, and that is scheduled as a special meeting on the 1st of February, beginning at 7:00, following the Rules Committee, then another optional budget workshop on Wednesday, the 3rd of February, then the budget approval meeting, tentatively scheduled for your regular meeting on the 8th, and then if there were any veto considerations on the 22nd, and then be completed with the process. My question to the council is, of those meetings you see on the screen there, would you like us to move forward with all of them? Do you feel that any of them are not needed at this point? Again, you'll have all of the first, I guess, as far as the options would be the 30th and the 3rd of February, but I would ask, whatever, however you go, if you could express a preference to?
I'd like to speak to that first. It is highly unlikely, given this budget climate, that I would consider vetoing a cut that this council could agree upon. It's extremely difficult for all of us, and I've certainly been approached by every single group being asked to do so, and I have told them all that it is highly unlikely that I would veto. It's extremely difficult to cut, and I think that once the council reaches agreement on it, it is highly unlikely that the mayor will veto it. Alderman Holmes?
Madam Mayor, city manager, on Monday after the public hearing, could we not continue to meet then?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Alderman Jean-Baptiste?
Madam Mayor, it's a great statement, but you don't know what we'll do. We may decide to increase the taxes.
Don't ruin my faith in you, Alderman.
I know you would not veto cuts, but you don't know what else we'll do. But I would suggest that we keep the schedule, and if we need to eliminate some dates, then we do so.
Very good.
Well, next Saturday?
I think we should meet Monday.
You say Monday instead of Saturday?
Next Saturday.
Well, no, I understand that, but I'm, if we give the staff time to come back with all that we're asking them to come back with, which is really a whole nother budget, that we could, we, after the public hearing on Monday, that we would continue the budget meeting rather than meeting next Saturday, but that's just a suggestion.
That's true, because we need additional information.
Absolutely.
We're prepared to do whatever you ask of us, so just tell us.
It will give us more time to think about whatever you give us.
Okay.
So, Monday then? Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
We agree on that? Alderman Fisk, you?
What do you think?
I think, you proposed Monday, right?
I just wanted to say we could move after the public hearing and then not meet next Saturday, but, you know, because they will give the staff more time, I thought, but just work through the weekend.
No, no overtime.
Sure.
I'm okay with the, with the Monday after the public hearing.
Okay.
All right, is that all right with her? Alderman Fisk?
When are we hearing this?
We would then move that to Monday. The remaining piece of a presentation that you've not heard from staff is other funds and the capital budget. The capital budget, there are some challenges from a financing perspective. We're proposed to have the council basically give, ask for your approval to move forward with those projects that are being funded by other people, the state, federal government, all of those, and then after the operating budget is adopted, come back to you to talk about the locally funded capital projects. So, as long as that's not wildly objectionable, we could then give you the presentation, which we handed out today on Monday, the 1st, and talk a little bit about it, and then kind of put off some of those other discussions on the locally funded capital projects after the operating budget's adopted. We can do that, and would be our recommendation.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Before we adjourn, and since Alderman Grover, you still have a couple of minutes, I just want to, to get to your car. I just want to take advantage of the moment to thank, on behalf of the Haitian community in the city of Evanston and all Haitian people, whether in the United States and particularly on the island, to thank those of us who live in the city of Evanston for your generosity, your cause of support, your concerns. The Haitian people are very proud people, having been significant contributors to world history, having been the first to make a significant dent in the slavocracy that had gripped the western hemisphere in the early 1800s, having contributed by sending soldiers to the United States to fight in the Battle of Savannah, having contributed to assisting Latin American neighbors, Simon Bolivar, to gain independence in Venezuela, and under the condition that they free all their slaves, having established a second black republic in the western hemisphere, whose constitution provided total freedom for men, women, of all color, race, gender. We believe that the resilience that has been shown over the years will be able to bring us through. We are calling on the American people to sustain the call to rebuild Haiti, grants not debt. We have paid a lot of debts. Immediately after Haitians and Haiti's independence, the Haitian people, under the gunboats of France and the United States, were forced to pay reparations indemnity to France, 150 million francs in gold bullion at that time, which is equivalent to close to a trillion dollars today. It took until 1946, '47 to repay that debt, so that means the country's entire budget was tied to, entire revenue was tied to trying to pay out an obligation to those who have done them wrong. So, in Haiti, one of the things that happens if you cross a poor child with opportunity, that poor child will eat up that opportunity, because there's a pride, there's a motivation to do better. We don't believe in the question of equating poverty with character. The notion of underprivileged disadvantage at risk is not something that is in our vocabulary. So, the images you see of poor folks, these are people who, in their chest, in their heart, in their brain, is a deep pride and a deep belief in the, a bright future, and we believe that with your continued support, these things will be accomplished. I thank the city manager for putting, on the city's website, the information about one of our local organizations that's doing a lot of work, Haitian Congress to Fortify Haiti, has a website, HaitianCongress.org, you could go there to make your donations. But whatever you do, do something, whether you've chosen the Red Cross, Doctors Without Borders, Partners in Health, there's a Haitian-American Physician Association that number 3,000 members. These 3,000 Haitian-American physicians is equal to 10% of the total black population physicians in the United States. So, there are a lot of ways that you can help continue to advocate, but tell the story, you know, do a little research, tell the story that the Haitian people have been a significant player in the history of this hemisphere and of the world in the fight for freedom and human rights. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] So, I move adjournment then, again. We have a roll call, vote. Sorry. Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean-Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Win?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.